Okay, calling the meeting of the town council of November 12th to order at 5:30. Roll call, roll call please.
Councilmember Flynn?
Present.
Councilmember Walter?
Present.
Councilmember Hufte?
Present.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Present.
Mayor Haskell?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, so today we have, at 5:30, closed sessions. The first is going to address a public employee performance evaluation, and that is a three-month check-in for our town manager, Darcy Smith. That will be followed by a public employee performance evaluation. And that is for our town attorney, Catherine Engberg. So before we go into closed session, I'm going to invite the public to provide comments on the agendized items. And looking online, I see no attendees, and there's no one in the schoolhouse. So we can close public comment and bring it back into a closed session. All right, welcome everyone to our regular meeting of November 12th, 2025. We'll ask for a roll call.
Yes. Councilmember Walter?
Present.
Councilmember Flynn?
Present.
Councilmember Hufte?
Present.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Present.
Mayor Haskell?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. So the first item is a report out from the closed session. There is no report out from the closed session. However, we will be continuing the closed session after the adjournment of this meeting. So we'll move on then to the first item, which is a presentation by Mid Pen Open Space District, and it's their annual presentation. Are we ready? Do you want to come up to the dais here, the table rather? Yeah, you just have to turn on the mic. There you go.
Shall I begin?
Yes, feel free.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is John. I am presenting tonight on behalf of our board member, who unfortunately, just by virtue of scheduling, we have a persisting conflict. So it falls to me to present tonight.
When are you guys going to change your board name? What's the deal here? Aren't we important?
So tonight, I'm going to give you a brief presentation on some of the things going on at that district. And certainly, if you have questions, or maybe instances where I can't answer them, then I'm happy to get back, with a complete answer. Anybody who is, whether it's yourselves or the public who's new to Mid Pen, they always like to start a donation. We were created in 1972, so over 50 years ago, with a mission to acquire and preserve a regional redevelopment of open space in perpetuity, protect and restore the natural environment, and provide opportunities for the philosophy since the public employee evaluation. And then in 2004, when we annexed into San Mateo Coast, we added as part of the condition of our annexation to acquire and preserve agricultural land of regional significance, and then preserve rural character and for primitive uses of land re-sources on the coast. Well, I just got a text that's sitting online, they can't hear you. Sometimes these mics are glitching. I mean, you sort of have to do this. Almost suck it down. I guess it's a good thing that they're paying attention. Yeah, absolutely, yeah, somebody wants to hear. Yeah, definitely want to. Hopefully they. So just for, also for reference, we are not co-terminous with San Mateo County and San Jose Counties. There's a history of annexations starting in western Santa Clara, and we've steadily moved north into San Mateo County and then west onto the coast side over time. And in green, in dark green, you can see our holdings with total over 72,000 acres. I think at this point, we may be the largest landowners in San Mateo County. As you can see, these are our board boards. We have seven of them. Five of them are primarily situated in Santa Clara County, and then we have three that cover San Mateo County. The person who would be presenting tonight would be Margaret McNiven. Her district covers Portola Valley, as you can see in green. I've already talked about some of the facts about the district. We have seven directors. We get a sliver of property tax to do our work. To date, we now have 27 preserves across Santa Clara, San Mateo, and a little bit of Santa Cruz counties. Our enabling legislation allows us to purchase lands outside of our boundaries. Over that 72,000 acres, we have over 250 miles.
Hold on one second.
And you need, because I'm getting it got a little bit damaged, but they still, they say.
It's annoyingly close.
Oh. Hey, does that sound?
You have to have it right near you.
I feel like I'm eating the microphone. Okay, well, yeah, I'm trying to lean into it. Okay. Oh, okay, well then, let me. This way. Okay. Oh my God. I don't want my lips to touch this microphone. Okay, I'll try and project more to, oh, hey, I can hear myself. I apologize to folks online. Okay, so unlike county parks, we are open, we are free and open every day of the year. A half hour before sunrise to a half hour after sunset. Our main office is in Los Altos. We have two, three field offices right now. We just purchased land in Half Moon Bay, as Councilmember Walter knows, near the southern end of Half Moon Bay, to establish a coastal field office. We have approximately 250 employees and over 1,000 volunteers. And then finally, in 2014, we passed a $300 million bond to support our vision plan that was created in heavy consultation with the public. Just some of the preserve, pictures of some of the preserves near Portola Valley. We always like to highlight that. We have a photo contest every year that brings in a steady stream of just fantastic landscape pictures. So we like to showcase them when we can. And then finally, I'm getting to project updates. This picture, by the way, is the San Francisco Garter Snake, one of the most charismatic snakes in the state of California. The Mid Pen lands host some of the largest concentrations of those snakes, which are federally listed. And I'm not presenting on it tonight, but we do have a breeding, an active breeding program partnering with both USGS and the San Francisco Zoo to help to propagate their population further across the San Francisco Peninsula. Wildfire, it's always at the top of everyone's mind. I'll just note that recently, we declared wildfire season over for the year. That doesn't mean it won't happen, but things get stepped down a bit as far as our trucks are outfitted with tanks. So it also saves on fuel. But this is a picture of a prescribed burn that we performed down near Los Gatos at our Sierra Zul Preserve last year. And I'll say that the 2020 CZU Lightning Complex Fire, which consumed 86,000 acres of southern Santa Clara County and a good portion of Santa Cruz County, we participated in that suppression effort, and it really heightened the imperative for us to accelerate the work of our vegetation management. As you can see here, you have fire hazard severity zone maps of both the state responsibility area and in the brighter colors, the local responsibility areas. And you can see that the majority of San Mateo County is high and very high fire severity zone, as I'm sure you're keenly aware. Our program is divided into four parts. The first is vegetation management. We go through a prioritization process every year. We are ramping up our prescribed burn efforts to complement that. We're looking to do another burn in Santa Clara County next year, and potentially one in San Mateo County next year as well. Pre-fire and advisor maps, these are maps, detailed maps that we provide to the CAL FIRE and other agencies that do fire suppression work. So when they have a response, they know where resources are, both for their firefighting efforts as well as natural resources. If we know that they're endangered, the King's Mountain Manzanita, for instance, if they can in all possible avoid bulldozing those areas, you know, they have that information to make that choice. We will not be precluding them from doing that. And then a monitoring plan, of course, to understand what areas need the most attention. This is just one example of some of the work that we're doing. It's, you know, there's a lot of focus on acreage across the state, but sometimes the strategic application of things like shaded wheel breaks, brushing and mowing in strategic areas to reduce risk, particularly around things like escape routes, is important to us. And you can see highlighted in bright blue here that we have a number of areas where we are helping to keep those escape routes available to the public in the event of a wildfire. This is work that was recently completed over the course of, I believe, two or three years. And, you know, we'll be going, we again, go through this constant prioritization process. You'll see up on 35, there was some additional work that was done in concert with the Fire Safe Council, where they were treating, they were creating effectively a continuous shaded fuel break along the 35. So we are an active participant in that effort as well. And you'll even see a little bit of work done at Hawthorne's, maintaining the escape routes there. This is something that we wanted to highlight because it's core to our work, and that is something that we call environmentally sensitive vegetation management. This pairs, well, as you know, California is a, is a state that burns regularly. And this goes back to time in Memorial, when Native Americans really maintained the landscapes. So the species that exist here, particularly in our area, are either fire-adapted or fire-dependent. And we work to maintain those landscapes for both biodiversity and for public safety. So what we did here was that we sponsored a bill, SB 653, with Senator Dave Cortezzi as the author, to define that in statute. We're hoping to make this the standard by which vegetation management is done across the state. But you start with a definition. So funding sources can be tailored to incentivize the use of these specific practices. A good portion of it is based on what they call integrated pest management. It's a holistic approach to reducing particularly pests, I guess invasive plants, anything you don't want in a particular area could be classified as a pest. So when you're looking at things like French broom, for instance, that would be considered a pest. How do you best remove that such that it doesn't spring back in force after you've done a treatment? So there are a variety of techniques that occur when you perform that work. This is just more description of our prescribed burn program. Again, we did this down south last year, and we're looking to pull it. We were hoping to do it this year, conditions did not allow it at the time. So we'll be looking to pursue this again next year. This one is a project that we have over in La Jolla. Some of these projects aren't directly adjacent to Portola Valley, but we thought they might be of interest. The logging that occurred over the last century in the Santa Cruz Mountains, particularly to rebuild San Francisco after the 1906 earthquake, that denuded the ridgeline of trees has resulted in dense, unhealthy secondary forests. This is a particular project in the northern end of our preserve, of our La Jolla Preserve, to thin the forest such that the remaining trees can grow back larger to restore those original old growth and late cereal conditions. They can store more carbon, and they also serve as prime habitat for things like the marbled murlet, an endangered bird that, an endangered seabird that relies on old-growth forests for nesting. And we do have populations of them on the San Mateo Coast. So this process is just beginning. We've started our public meetings, and we hope in the next year, we'll begin treatments of this landscape, of this area. This is something that, I guess, Councilmember Walter has experienced with. We opened up a six-mile length of new trail at La Jolla. We had hoped to make it a ribbon-cutting ceremony. The weather had different plans, so it was effectively a soft opening, but it is now officially open to the public. A trail that joins our southern trails to the northern portions. And at the northern portion up here, and I don't know if they can point at it or not, but what we call the CoHo Vista Trail. There's a section here that offers some of the most spectacular view of the coast side, easily accessible from the north. But if you wish to hike the length of this trail, you can get there as well. I don't know if the council member has any comments about the quality of the trail.
So first of all, I'd love to say that when I was out hiking this last weekend, who did I run into but Vice Mayor Taylor? So that was pretty fun, actually. So, yeah, and it's spectacular and gorgeous, but it's hilly.
For the faint of heart. Yeah, there is an intention to build a more mid-preserve connection to shorten that length. It's building parking lots adjacent to Highway 84 is a bit of a challenge, just the speed of traffic. So, but we're still working on it. This is another one of our flagship trails that we're working on to construct. Over the, over many years, I think since the 80s, we've been assembling parcels within the Paris McCreve Redwood Open Space Preserve, which has spectacular stands of redwoods. But assembling them from the ridgeline all the way down to Highway 1, and then eventually connecting to the coastal trail, is what they call the Skyline to the Sea Trail. So this project is both to build the trails as well as create new public access opportunities, as well as a shuttle service down towards the bottom. We get over 200,000 visitors to this preserve every year. So getting access to it is, in a way that doesn't always rely on cars, is important to us. It's close enough to Half Moon Bay, where a shuttle service could even conceivably connect the transit. The larger vision here is actually the Bay to the Sea Trail. So we would be, you know, we're building the western portion, and then working with our partners on the eastern portion. This part here is relying on a right-of-way, potential right-of-way through the Dunbarton Rail Corridor, where it connects east Palo Alto to downtown Lindwood City. You know, all of these things are, at this point, will be generational efforts. Another project that we're working on, that we'll be concluding this year, is our mountain lion behavioral study. It's never good when mountain lions have interactions with humans. So we're trying to understand what influences those interactions and how we can be potentially proactive in minimizing those interactions. So we've been doing collaring studies. This is, I believe, an over $5 million study to track mountain lions across the peninsula, and then try different behavioral modification techniques, playing human voices while, in this case, hazing mountain lions. And then also to continue on the mountain lion theme, this is one of our, this is actually our top project for the district. When we did our vision study in 2014, this was identified as the number-one project the public wanted. And we've made a lot of progress. So this is Highway 17 that connects San Jose to Santa Cruz, near the dam at Lexington Reservoir. We have two things here. One is a wildlife undercrossing, and then a connection for the Bay Area Ridge Trail, an overcrossing. From what we're told, this is the most complex segment of the entire 550-mile ring of the Bay Area Ridge Trail, is this cross. Each project costs about $20 million. So we're actually almost through all the design documents. VTA is our construction partner, and we're hoping to break ground in 2027. Yeah, yeah, no, it's, we're shocked too. One thing you'll see here is that this is what, the crossing is situated in what they call a regional critical linkage. These are primary pathways where wildlife moves across the region. You have Coyote Valley down here into the Diablo Range, and then this linkage that goes all the way down to the Gabaln Range. So this wildlife crossing would connect the Santa Cruz Mountains with those southern and eastern mountain ranges. Mountain lions in the Santa Cruz Mountains are provisionally listed as threatened. There's a steady loss of genetic diversity for these mountain lions because of issues like crossing Highway 17, so you get lots of inbreeding. Hopefully, this will help to address some of that. And this is something that we're trying to highlight more nowadays. The use of anticoagulant rodenticides has been a particular problem. We've supported the passage of legislation over the last five years to outlaw the use of second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides. It's helping, there was an article recently that showed that more work needs to be done. But we are definitely seeing the effects with our predator populations. What you see here are pictures of coyotes and bobcats that have been affected with mange as a result of consuming rodents that have died as a result of these anticoagulant rodenticides. And we know that mountain lions are affected as well. And, you know, if those same animals are pregnant, their fetuses are affected. So we're encouraging alternative methods to reduce rodent populations. Raptors are a good one, building owl boxes. There's a host of integrated pest management techniques, exclusion, and other techniques that do this without the use of poison. And then switching gears here, we have an active partnership program that we engage with local nonprofits to fund their efforts to get the community out onto our preserves. And we have a tiered system, so based on the experiences we have with these nonprofits, we ramp up our funding for them and try to target specific populations that otherwise would not be able to access our preserves. You see here that Latino Outdoors is a deep partner with ours. We've been working with them for about 10 years now. And then finally, we have an activities page. If you're not aware of it, we host dozens of activities, whether it's docent tours, volunteer events, and then just other events in general. So I would encourage you and the community to take a look at this for opportunities to access and enjoy our preserves and help if you can. Things like weed pulling can be very therapeutic. We have people who've been doing it for decades. And that's it. That's the kind of a brief update on some of the things that we are going on. There's a lot more, which would consume a much larger time.
Thanks for the update. This is an annual report, but it's, you're just giving us a chance to appreciate the resource that we have right next door, so to speak, and all the program that you're doing to support that. Comments, questions? This is a presentation, so we can start with Rebecca and then come down.
Thank you so much. I think I speak for everyone, seeing how wonderful it is to be, have this in our backyard. I think you're actually probably our largest landowner in Portola Valley, probably. I did have a couple of questions. One is, with the addition of the properties along the coast, you added on sort of a new philosophy, in terms of preserving agricultural elements. And I just wanted to have a little bit more of a perspective of, I noticed, maybe it's today's meeting, they're talking about the preservation of four barns, two of which, maybe it's next week, but I can't remember. I was just looking at the agenda, and there was the preservation of four barns, two of which were listed as potentially historic, and the other two were not. So I'm just wondering, when you make prioritization in terms of supporting trails and acquisition of sensitive land versus spending money on, maybe it's an agricultural use, I don't know. But do you have a good sense of how those decisions are made?
There is a process. Some of it's dictated by statute, particularly for structures that are being historic. I can't get too deep into that, I'm certainly able to. And, you know, we're certainly living it through our properties in Portola Valley. So you may have a more of a firsthand knowledge of it than I do. My wife is a planner, and actually, she's working on Hawthorne's. She could probably talk your off about it. But unfortunately, I don't, we do go through a prioritization process, and particularly, to store structures, you know, stabilize them, in some cases, demolish them with sufficient mitigations. But I will be out of my depth if I got into any.
Thank you.
Mary?
Well, I had several questions. One was, these are just questions. You said you called off, the fire season is over, this is good news for all of us. Does that mean you're not burning now? When does your burning season start?
We are going to be doing some pile burning, not here, but in other parts of the district. And that's typically done through manual mastication of vegetation. You move it into a big pile and you burn it as opposed to something.
Right, right. But when is your, when are you timing that?
Pretty soon, actually.
Yeah, I would think it's, it isn't over, that fire part is not over.
Yeah, no, but this is becoming around.
Yeah. And the other had to do with rodenticides. You have lots of houses in MROSD lands. What do you use for rodenticides specifically? Because we have a pretty active effort in our neighborhoods to control our rodents.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with our use of rodenticides because we typically, I mean, we do have.
Well, it would be super helpful for us, Bings, as we do affect your wildlife, if you could help us hone in on what to use.
Yeah.
Because we're completely surrounded.
You can provide that information. I mean, we do, we have over 40 residents on our properties. When we buy land, oftentimes it's ranch land with existing structures. So rather than just demolish them, we rehabilitate them and make them available to staff. There's a prioritization process there. But they have the same issues as any other resident would have. I believe it starts with exclusion, mechanical traps, those owl boxes I mentioned. Owls are very prolific hunters of rodents. I'm not familiar with the use of rodenticides.
Well, we don't need to talk specifics if you're not familiar. So the third, the third question was about wildlife corridors and how you sustain those. And I suppose in specific, we, we're having, we're hoping to have a celebration of wildlife awareness and hoping that MRSD will participate with us. Who would we contact?
Oh, I, I mean, you can certainly contact me and I can.
Okay.
Our events person who could be hosting that. Yeah.
And we'd like support with cordos, that's plenty. Thank you.
Okay.
So I just got a couple of questions around wildfire. Obviously, that's a big concern for the town and you are the largest landowner in Portola Valley. So congratulations.
Thirty percent.
So. So you said it's the end of wildfire season and I guess one question I had is, do you consult with fire, fire, sorry, with fire professionals? When you do that, or is this a sort of just mid-pen declares it on their own?
It's through CAL FIRE.
Okay, I just, I guess I'm.
Email that, announce it and see if there's a, you know, a particular organization that makes that determination.
Okay.
Announce it throughout our organization.
Okay, yeah, because I, I was just, yeah, I'm just curious whether you talk to the LRAs as well as the SRAs? Because obviously CAL FIRE is SRA.
Yeah, I mean, we, we'd be consulting with the Woodside Fire Protection District, Fire Safety Councils. We are in tight connection with all of those, with anybody who does fire response.
Yeah, because I mean, obviously, the, the big issue for us here is creating buffers between residential and mid-pen lands. And that's, you know, I mean, it's bad when mid-pen, you know, the lands burn, but it's really bad if they burn out of mid-pen and into a residential.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, so I think that's kind of a critical area. So, and I guess along that, you know, you talked about a prioritization process for your wildland fire resilience plan, which I will now refer to as the WFRP. Yeah, no, exactly. So I'm interested in that process, if you, if you can just give me like a thumbnail and also what the budget is for it.
Yeah, we did, we did a back-of-the-envelope calculation. It's, it's kind of fluid because our staff, you know, our, our rangers, our field staff are, you know, often trained as first responders. So there's a bit of wildfire response built into almost every aspect of the district. And the back-of-the-envelope was approximately 20 to 25% of our budget goes into, and it depends year-to-year. Equipment purchases.
Sure.
Trainings, special projects. It's, it's a host of activities. And, you know, we, we tried, we took a swag at it, but it's, it's so fluid and it's, it's just frankly difficult to de-involv from, you know, all the activities.
Sure, inter, yeah, it's interrelated to a lot of other things that you do. I guess I was particularly trying to drill down a little bit on how the prioritization gets done. Like, how do, how do people engage with that prioritization? And I'm thinking particularly, you know, which side Fire Protection District is, is basically our local fire for the LRA? And I'm wondering how they interact with your prioritization to make sure that sort of the plans that we're making here within our district are dovetailing with the plans that you guys are making and that we're, you know, we're maximizing the benefit.
There is, there is a conversation that occurs. I know we use multi-factor GIS models for both ecological prioritization and public safety prioritization. But then those models are discussed with the fire, wildfire entities.
Okay, I mean, that's good enough for now. I'm not trying to drill you too deep, but I, I, I would be interested in getting a little more detail on that. Maybe you and I could talk afterwards. I mean, not after tonight, but at some point. Thank you.
And I'm happy to give you my card if you want to reach out with a specific question and we, we can get that. I know last April, we did a comprehensive presentation on our wildfire program. It took about two hours. We're hoping to make that a semi-regular occurrence to discuss the programmatic elements of, of our wildfire program and then, you know, discussion of the progress.
Yeah, that would be great, yeah. So let's do that.
Like, at a minimum, I can point you to that presentation.
Yep.
But certainly connected with the experts who can discuss the details of how that prioritization.
Yeah, good, perfect, thanks.
Great, Helen?
So thank you, first of all, for everything you and your team do. You know, you guys do an amazing job of protecting environmentally sensitive habitats and creating these open spaces that allow public access while, you know, allowing cattle to graze. I know, which actually.
Experience that this weekend.
Fosters better, you know, native habitats because of that, actually, the way it's rotated. I really appreciate what you guys do and I appreciate that you guys are talking to us because Mid-Pen is, yes, the biggest landowner in town. And it will, you know, with Hawthorns coming online, I just wanted to bring up, this is looking down the line and, and I've talked to your wife, I've, I've met, she's the planner for Hawthorns. I've mentioned it to various board members as well. Parking, really sexy, I know, but we need to collaborate to make sure, particularly safety-wise, as well as trying to encourage carpooling for environmental reasons as well as the impact on the town. So it's a bigger, longer-term, it's not a priority of the council, but just putting it, like, putting a pin in it for down the road.
I'm relying on that parallel discussion. If you're talking about hawthorn, I'm, I, my wife told me, save it for the, for the other projects.
Right, so I'm just mentioning it because, you know, I know Wendy Hill, the back, the Willowbrook at Alpine Road entrance, we have so much congestion there, you know, fire, wildfire apparatus. It could be challenging getting through there. So mentioning it, we, you know, definitely with Hawthorns coming online and then the other one, whose name I'm forgetting, that will be online probably in 10 or 15 years. So as this unit gets bigger and more connected, just definitely something I would love for Mid-Pen to, and, and the town to be working together on.
It's something that we, you know, and we, and we see this with all the public access programs. It's, it's weighing, you know, being, trying to be content, sensitive to the context as well as recognizing that we are a regional entity with 750,000 constituents. So it's, it's trying to find that balance.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, so, but, you know, in, in the interest of being environmentally sensitive, while we want public access, how do we also encourage carpooling and biking and, you know?
That's been a persistent legislative priority for us, is to find ways to forward multimodal access, transit to trails is one of the terms.
Yep, and I love that what you guys are doing on the coast with the, you know, looking, you know, all the shuttle infrastructure.
The microtransit. Yeah, where it presents itself or where the opportunity presents itself. Because by definition, open spaces fall away and things like vehicle miles traveled becomes a, a challenge for any solution. You know, and then of course, you'd be people with, you know, a lack of infrastructure out on the coast, particularly on the coast side or charging, you know, is, is the new hurdle, you know, getting people out there.
Right, and so I just wanted to, you know, you know, as, as more of our, of the land in Portola Valley becomes more publicly accessible, right, to make sure that not only is, that we don't, how do you say it, kill the projects because it's of the overimpact, right?
You know, we don't want our preserves to be loved to death.
Right, so.
No, it's, it's, it's an ongoing tension within the organization. You know, planning, you know, focuses on public access. Our Natural Resources Department, of course, you know, serves as our, you know, our internal permitting entity that will limit our ability to provide that public access. Many examples of that.
So thank you for what you guys are doing. Thank you.
And to close out, we're ever so fortunate to have what we have here. We, we look forward to future partnerships with you. The one question I have, just because I, a mountain lion was killed in town here, just the behavior modification of a mountain lion and you mentioned voices, so what is that?
Yeah, it's, 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 you're, you're, to oversimplify, you're treeing the mountain lion. We're working with CDFW in that place to tree, tree a mountain lion, you're playing human voices and then providing different hazing techniques that can include ink balls, things like that.
Okay, like a negative correlation between a human voice and something uncomfortable? Okay.
Human voice, I'm not sure that who, you think? I'd be interested to find out.
I, I don't think it's yours. It's too soothing.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they were also doing that with coyotes.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Up, up in Wendy Hill, they were doing the same thing, so.
Makes, makes a lot of sense. It's interesting and, and definitely I'll be following that because it's, living with wildlife is one of our concerns in town.
Something on the order of 50 mountain lions in this Santa Cruz mountains. Yeah, and particularly adolescent mountain lions, you know, they, they need to find their range.
Yeah, understood. Well, thank you so much. This has been a great refresh on what you all do and, and thank you for coming in this evening.
Happy to, and if, if there are specific topics that either we didn't answer tonight or you're interested, please don't hesitate to reach in. And we'll get them answered to you in one way or another. You can certainly come back or, you know, just to correspond.
We'll keep, definitely keep that in mind.
Theoretically, I'm your liaison.
I'm sorry?
I'm your liaison.
Well, okay.
Yes, so you're supposed to reach out to me.
Name and a face.
Yes, you're, thank you.
Great. All right, we're going to move on to item number five on our agenda. So thank you very much. We can relieve you of the obligation to speak so closely into the mic. It, we're, we don't take comments on the presentation, but those folks can hang on and we'll take their comments on oral communications if it's not on an agendized matter. Town manager report.
Yes, thank you. Darcy Smith, Town Manager. I have a long report in part because November's a busy month. So some key updates. The safety element is on your agenda tonight, but another important document relative to town safety is something called the San Mateo County Local Hazard Mitigation. And that work just kicked off. The plan evaluates hazard vulnerability and outlines specific mitigations to address those to minimize damages to, to personal property and community disruptions that can be caused by disasters. And why I mention it is that the county right now is running a survey to kick out that project. So if you haven't participated in the survey, please do it. You can read more about the plan and the town's role in that plan, which again is different than our safety element, on the Town Manager blog. Additionally, we have another plan called the Local Road Safety Plan, which many of you have been hearing about for a while. The county led that effort and the town's Bicycle, Pedestrian and Traffic Safety Committee for many months has been working on that. Happy to announce it's been finished and it will be posted on our website this week and it will come to you on December 10th. But why I mention is it's a pretty long document. So I just want to make sure the public and the council has time to review it in advance of December 10th. This morning, I went to a parent coffee at Corta Madera School, hosted by the school district, on e-bikes and youth. And why I mention it is because as e-bikes and something I learned more recently is e-motocycles and motorized scooters, scooters become more popular, the safety and the legality of these have become a growing concern, especially for young riders. So what I learned today is that often these e-bikes are actually, that are marketed to children, teens and being bought, are actually not legal. They're not even close to being legal. They're motorcycles, essentially, they go fast and they can cause serious harm. So I mentioned is that there was a great presentation this morning, I'll post on the town blog and we're just kind of, we're trying to spread the word as the holidays approach that what you may find online is likely not legal and there are serious criminal and potentially soul exposure that our, our parents of youth have here. And just as a reminder, in this town, they can only be ridden in streets, not on our paths and trails. Next, our Planning and Building Department, led by our interim director, Steve McHarris, has focused a lot in the past few weeks on improving service to the community. So we now have planners who are in the town hall in the mornings, if you ever want to drop in and ask questions. But also, we just launched an online booking meeting tool so that you can go on the town website and book 30-minute virtual meetings with the planners too. We're also just constantly looking at what other operational improvements we can make. So for example, posting a list of building permits, submittals and building permits issued every month is something. But if you have any suggestions, please let Steve and I know. We also, in our Finance Department, have been working hard on the town annual finance audits. So I give a monthly update and we are on track. The fiscal year 2223 audit is anticipated to be provided to the town Finance Department in December or January. And then we will take those through the process. The fiscal year 2324 audits should be provided in June or July and we should have a draft of the financial statements for fiscal year 2425 by September of '26. And we should have our 2526 pro forma statements complete then as well. And again, I'll post updates on the town blog and our newsletters. We move through that process, we're on track. Last, town hall is closed for Thanksgiving holiday. That will be Thursday, November 27th and Friday, November 28th. So wish everyone a nice Thanksgiving holiday. We don't see you.
Uh, yeah, yeah, thank you, Darcy. There's a lot going on.
I have a quick comment about the e-bikes, just so that people understand what we're seeing statewide on the e-bikes. So Kenny Board of Ed had a presentation. Marin's doing, been doing, County, Marin County has been doing a ton of e-bikes. And you talked about the liability for parents. What we're also seeing is five times the number of accidents for under 16-year-olds. And the severity of accidents is extreme. So I just wanted to mention that. So it is being considered, legislation is being, at the state level is my understanding. There have been nibbles at the cookie, but we're expecting something bigger to come in this year. Thanks.
Great. All right, then the next is oral communication. So we're going to invite members of the public to comment on anything that is not agendized or on the Town Manager Report. So going back, there's no hand raised in the schoolhouse. Karen Askey has her hand raised online. Go ahead, John.
Oh, hi, everyone. I thought the presentation was great for Hawthorns. And one thing, as you know, it was a little bit hard to hear the speaker and when Helen was speaking about parking, it was hard to hear his responses. But I, I'd like to add, besides just Willowbrook, the parking all along Portola Road creates an issue if there's ever an evacuation scenario and we need more space. So I do think that's something that we should be focusing on and I wanted to bring that up. And then I also think it would be great to get an update on what is going on with Hawthorns, both on what they call, there's two areas, as you know. One is called the Hawthorns Area Plan, which would be the opening on the Alpine roadside, but also what's happening with the historic complex. So I just wanted to bring those up because I think there's a lot of residents very interested in that. Thank you.
Thank you. I am not seeing any other hands raised and just to remind people, we're not allowed to discuss any items that are brought forward on oral communications. We just hear them out and we'll follow up as appropriate. All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. And for this item, we're going to be taking it at a minimum in two pieces because I believe Vice Mayor Taylor is going to be recusing from the minute approval abstaining. Sorry, thank you, thank you. So first, I'm going to call for public comment on the consent agenda and see if there's anyone with comments. I'm seeing no one in the schoolhouse and no hands are raised online. Wait, hold on, one just went up. Kristy Corley, do you have a comment on the consent agenda? Wait, hold on. One just went up. Kristi Corley, do you have a comment on the consent agenda? You're on mute.
Oh, I'm just wondering if you're approving the minutes in the consent agenda.
That's what we're going to go to. Do you have any comments on that?
Yes, I'd like, I think due to the Brown Act, we have a right not to have our full name. So I've spoken many times, Kristi C. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, any, anyone else want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Either seven A and B on the one hand or seven C and B on the other.
Can I pull the warrant list, please?
Okay, so seven C is pulled. Okay, Mary, do you have?
No.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna first look for a, a motion on items seven A and B with Councilmember Taylor abstaining.
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Craig is abstaining. Is that proper procedure? Okay, thank you. All right, so seven A and B are approved. Then I'd like a motion for seven D, the resolution appointing a director. And I have a procedural question here. There's just a date that's wrong there, the twenty-twenty-seven reference. I don't know what it should be on that resolution. Page twenty-nine.
Yes, it is twenty-seventeen. We will correct it on the resolution.
Seventeen, okay. So then, subject to that one correction, can I have a motion to approve seven D?
So moved.
Second.
Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And then the warrant list, Rebecca, you want that pulled?
Yes, I just wanted to see if we could get a quick answer for the resident, the Parks and Rec question about the use of the private security during the Tots to, Zots to Tots race. Thanks.
Yeah, we've used Woodside Portola Valley Patrol since twenty-twenty-three. The amount was five hundred and eighty-five dollars, not the twelve hundred. Twelve hundred dollars was the full amount, but the other six hundred dollars was related to the community cleanup days. But we've used Portola, like I said, we've used the Woodside Portola Valley Patrol since twenty-twenty-three.
And their question was also related, how the decision was made to hire them for the park, for the event and the coordination with the Parks and Rec and the BPTS.
It's part of the process was set up by the town. Our former senior management analyst, Ari, was responsible for that. But at some point, the, the Parks and Rec Committee, we went with Woodside Portola Valley Patrol because the sheriff's office wasn't notified in time. And so the last minute, we, you know, requested Woodside Portola Valley Patrol to do the security for the Sosatots Town Picnic. And that's been the process since twenty-twenty-three.
And other questions?
Yeah, can I just get clarification? So we're paying for the sheriff as well as Woodside Portola Valley Patrol.
The sheriff who's free.
Well.
Correct. This, well.
It's included in the contract.
Yeah. This, yeah, this special event is included in our base contract. We do not pay extra for it. So whether we use it or don't, we pay the same. Woodside Patrol does a different task than the sheriff's office in this specific incident in that they manage the parking and the traffic over here. You get the entrance to town center, which can get congested. They do the same work, for example, for the music series and other big events. And the sheriff's department, that's a very low-level thing that they, that they would probably charge us extra for something that's like that. But the traffic control in the road, they consider more of a a serious traffic hazard, you know, if someone blows through a street closure and enters into a race. So they're willing to take that on for free right now.
So would we consider using our cert group to do this and save ourselves, you know, six hundred dollars per? Does that mean this is, it sounds like this is parking management.
So yes, but I want to emphasize that when we contract with Woodside Patrol, they have indemnification, insurance and bonding. Those are very important things to the town. So there are certain services that we have to, I, I feel like, and the town attorney will back this up, that we have to contract through a licensed, bonded, insured professional organization to do cert, volunteers or volunteers, but it would likely be too much liability for the town to request that they do those services unless, unless they have their own insurance and bonding for it.
Which they do and they're under the auspices of workers comp and a bunch of other stuff. We don't need to go into detail now, but I think we should look into this.
Sure, we can look into it.
Because in theory, they're gonna, this is the kind of stuff they would do if we were doing evacuations, for instance. So I mean.
Practice.
Well, it's not just practice, it's just, it seems odd to me that we're saying, oh, they can't do this. But then if we really had a serious thing, that they're going to do that. So it seems a little bit of a mismatch to me. So yeah, let's, let's just talk about it. Let's, let's put it on my next one-on-one. Thank you.
Talk about it.
All right, other questions? Okay, no other comments. I have a motion to approve seven C.
Motion to approve seven C.
Second.
Aye.
You got a second?
Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one opposed? I just want to clarify that we didn't, we approved the special meeting minutes, but Kristi had made a request to just use Kristi C. So that doesn't need us to redo that consent, right?
Correct. The clerk will make that correction.
Okay, thank you.
For this one and going forward.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item is a public hearing on considering the introduction of an ordinance to adopt the twenty-twenty-five California Building Standards Code and local amendments. I believe Steve is going to lead us through the presentation with appropriate support.
Thank you, Mayor Haskell, members of the council. I'm Steve McHarris and I'm your interim planning and building director. Getting before you is the introduction and public hearing of an ordinance to adopt the twenty-twenty-five California Building Standards Code and local amendments. With us virtually here this evening, we have four individuals. We have Greg McMahon, who is our contract building official with CSG. We have Blake Hirsch, Hirschap with Peninsula Clean Energy. We have Taylor Taylor with TRC, who supports Peninsula Clean Energy. And we have Lauren Tarpe, who is associate with Shoot Mahali Weinberger Law. Lauren is going to join us. She's actually going to join in on the presentation in a few moments to review some of the code changes in, in. And, but for now, I'm just going to give you an overview. The California Building Standards Code is updated statewide every three years. It's enforced by the town through the building permit process. The last update was in twenty-twenty-two with the adoption of the reach codes. The proposed code updates, update covers building, electrical, mechanical, plumbing codes and applies to all buildings and structures that require building permit application. All applications for the building permits submit, are submitted after January first of twenty-twenty-six will be subject to this revised code. The state law authorizes the town to amend or modify the building standards code so long as the change is equivalent or, or more restrictive than the state code. The proposed ordinance adopts all parts of the twenty-twenty-five California Building Standards Code by reference. And these include a number of parts. I'm just going to quickly list them off. There's California Administrative Code, Building Code Volumes One and Two, the Residential Code, Electrical Code, Mechanical Code, Plumbing Code, Calenergy Code. And then there's a new Wildland Urban Interface Code, and that's containing relevant code previously found in other sections of the code. There's a stored buildings code, the existing fire code. With that, we anticipate a December tenth council hearing for adoption of a fire code update prepared by the Woodside Fire Protection District. We have the existing building code, the green building standards code and reference standards code. The proposed update is primarily to be consistent with the state mandatory update. So that's what's being presented to you this evening. However, there are a few changes to the green building standards code, also referred to as the reach code, that were adopted by the town council in twenty-twenty-two. These changes are primarily in response to the twenty-twenty-four California Restaurant Association versus City of Berkeley Court of Appeals decision, which is a perfect segue for Lauren Tarpe to walk us through. So I'm going to ask Lauren.
And if I don't mind, if you had to do a little bit more of an intro, Lauren, it, with my, as Steve mentioned, and I asked her to help the town with this project. She's worked on several building code updates for some of our other clients. Also does work on behalf of Silicon Valley Clean Energy and is very familiar with reach codes and can help walk us through in terms of what the council approved in twenty-twenty-two and what is before you here in twenty-twenty-five. So, so with that, Lauren, I will turn this over to you. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much, Catherine and Steve, and good evening. Thank you all for having me tonight. As Catherine and Steve mentioned, I'm going to just give a quick overview of some of the changes in our proposed energy reach code measures and explain how they differ from the measures that were adopted in twenty-twenty-two. And I also wanted to step back and give a little context again on the timing of this adoption and the reason that we are proposing this ordinance now. So as Steve mentioned, every three years, the State Building Standards Commission updates and adopts building standards that apply statewide. And the state's update supersedes any local changes that were previously adopted. So all of the town's reach code measures and other building code changes that it made in twenty-twenty-two will be superseded on January first of twenty-twenty-six, unless it readopts those changes now to go into effect on January first, along with the state changes. So that's the reason that we're bringing this ordinance here tonight. I, I should mention, of course, that the state is not precluded from adopting further changes at a later date. But if it wants its code measures to be enforceable on January first, the time to make those changes is now. So I wanted to explain briefly what, what the town adopted in twenty-twenty-two as far as energy reach code measures and then compare those to what we're proposing tonight. So in twenty-twenty-two, the town adopted a suite of energy reach code measures. And in this code cycle, we're going to repeal a few of those in order to comply with federal law, as Steve mentioned, and we'll readopt a few others with some changes. So the first major reach code measure adopted in twenty-twenty-two was an all-electric requirement. And that required that all newly constructed buildings and outdoor amenities be built all-electric. We are going to, we are proposing to repeal that requirement in this ordinance. As Steve mentioned, that change is a response to the Ninth Circuit's decision in the City of Berkeley case in which the court held that federal law preempted Berkeley's building code that prohibited natural gas piping in buildings. So the town legally can't re-adopt its electric, all-electric requirement, and we are repealing that in this ordinance. Also in twenty-twenty-two, the town adopted an EV charging readiness requirement that applied to new residential buildings. We are repealing that requirement in this ordinance as well due to updates in the state code for electric vehicle charging requirements. So the state code has now made advancements that mean that local changes are not necessary. So no need to go above and beyond what the state is requiring for EV readiness. In twenty-twenty-two, we also adopted two measures that apply to existing buildings. One of those is the all-elect, or excuse me, the electric readiness requirement for additions, alterations and repairs that are replacing or upgrading an electric panel. We are re-adopting this requirement in twenty-twenty-five with no change. So this measure requires that the panel have sufficient capacity and breaker space to support future electrification of various appliances that are listed in the ordinance. It also requires that the location of a water heater have a two-hundred-and-forty-volt circuit installed, again, to provide for future electrification of the water heater. So again, that was adopted in twenty-twenty-two and we are proposing to bring that forward again in twenty-twenty-five. The last measure that was adopted in twenty-twenty-two was an AC to heat pump replacement requirement. And that required that additions, alterations or repairs that included replacing, upgrading or relocating the AC unit, replace that unit with a heat pump. So we are proposing to largely re-adopt this requirement in twenty-twenty-five, but with some changes to add more flexibility than we had in twenty-twenty-two. So the, the ordinance language that we have included here is model reach code, code language that was provided by Bay Area Reach Codes and developed in collaboration with the statewide Reach Codes program. So this language would, again, apply to projects that are additions, alterations or repairs to existing buildings that are replacing or upgrading that AC unit. And one of the compliance options is to install a heat pump, which both provides cooling and heating. But there are additional compliance options, such as, again, reinstalling an AC unit, but adding additional efficiency measures to the building. The reason for this change is to provide flexibility that aims to avoid a preemption challenge under federal law. So with that, I will turn it back to Steve and I appreciate your time.
So as I mentioned, we have several people here that are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. That was really comprehensive and helpful. Our first set of questions. I think we can get started. I'll start with you, Helen, if you don't mind.
Thank you. So I'm super excited to see this being brought forward before the deadline. Thank you for bringing it forward. Couple of quick questions. It is for remodels as well as new construction, right? And is the remodel, is the threshold fifty percent? Or what is our threshold, or twenty-five percent? What is our threshold?
The answer is yes, it is for remodels. And the fifty percent, Lauren, was there anything more specific like that?
I, I want to clarify, I heard some of it was remodel, some was new construction. So if you could clarify that in your answer.
So yes, for new construction and for remodel, Lauren, could you actually clarify on the fifty percent?
So both of the reach code measures that we have included here, the electric readiness and the AC to heat pump, apply to existing buildings and they apply to additions, alterations and repairs. There is no minimum threshold of the square footage that is, that would need to be changed in order to trigger them. But there is a trigger specific to, for electric readiness. It's a project that requires upgrading or replacing the electric panel. So it only applies to projects that are already, you know, undergoing that change to the electric panel. And for the AC requirement, the trigger would be that the AC unit is going to, a, a new AC unit is being installed or it's being replaced.
Thank you. Okay, so for the AC to heat pump situation, that's not HVAC, right? It's just the AC, the heat pump. Is that right? Or is it the HVAC?
So the specific trigger, and I can also call on Taylor, I believe, if she's online, to, to help provide a little more detail, but the specific trigger in the code is that the, the air conditioner is being replaced or installed. So it's not the HVAC system more broadly that would trigger the requirement.
Okay. And my last question would be the amperage for inductions. And I did, can we make sure that there's in the code, the amperage is enough to cover large induction stove tops? Because those do take quite a bit of amperage, so between forty and sixty amps. So does that, my question would be then, does the current proposal cut, you know, when sufficient, are we making sure that people, when they eventually go to put in an induction, does that have enough amperage built into our code?
I'm, I think on this one, I will call on Taylor, if she is available, to provide more specifics about the amperage requirements.
Thank you, and nice to see you, Taylor.
Nice to see you too. Hello, everyone. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Honorable Counsel. I am Taylor Taylor. I work for TRC, which is an environmental consulting company. And I specialize in building reach codes. How the current electric readiness language is laid out as proposed leaves it open for what specific amperage would be allowed for an electric stove top. So right now, it just proposes having an electrical capacity reservation for that appliance. It does not list a specific amperage that would be required. Typically, it's in the ballpark of. not list a specific amperage that would be required. Typically, it's in the ballpark of 50 amps.
Great, thank you. That's my questions.
Okay, Craig?
So generally, I think this stuff's great, and heat pumps are fabulous, and induction stoves are fabulous. I did have a question about installing power for a water heater. It wasn't clear to me what's driving this. Like, I get making sure that you leave capacity in the panel, but given that there are water heater options that are 120 volt versus 240 volt, and that technology continues to change, you know, putting in a 240-volt circuit is often a non-trivial cost. So I guess I'm wondering what motivates that one particular piece. I don't know who's the right person to ask this question to, but.
It looks like Taylor has her hand raised, so I'll let her speak to the specifics. But I did want to mention that this particular provision was adopted in 2022. So we would, we had proposed to include it here to, you know, stay the course with the, with the reach code that was adopted in 22, but I will let Taylor speak if she has any more specifics. Thank you.
Yes, this is a very good question, as 120-volt water heating technology is becoming more and more common to be seen installed. How the language lays out makes sure that the branch circuit in the infrastructure within the wall is capable for 240 volts. It would still be capable to be able to swap over to a 120-volt setup, but what it wants to avoid is someone having to go back through their wall and potentially tear up drywall, kind of those larger sort of renovation projects in order to install an electric heat pump water heater. So there is some attempt to make the language flexible, but provide the larger 240-volt branch circuits that, in case that is needed, based on, for instance, the size of the water heater that would be available to the resident.
So, so I guess that for new construction, I totally understand. It's like, you know, you're already putting wires in, you might as well just put some, you know, bigger wires in, you know, lower gauge. I don't understand for, if somebody's replacing, in a remodel, replacing their electrical panel, to maybe, say, put in a car charging, so they need, you know, more breakerspace, and now all of a sudden, you probably have $1,500, $2,000 charge to potentially put in a circuit that you don't need. So I'm 100% behind it for new construction. That makes sense to me. I'm struggling with the remodel aspects of this. I mean, and again, because the 120-volt technology is coming along. So it feels like this is one of those things, like I remember, you know, with incandescent lights and then fluorescent lights, and originally, they had these weird fixtures. And, I mean, there's a bunch of stuff that got regulated in, it was quite expensive, and eventually turned out to have very little value. And this, I guess, feels a little like that to me. So I guess I'm looking for a little bit more clarity on that.
Are you looking for clarity on whether we have room to limit this to new constructions, or?
Sure, I mean.
What do other jurisdictions do? What do you, what do you want to hear about?
Yes, but, I mean, both of those seem good. I mean, could, could we just limit this to new construction? What are the downsides of removing this from residential remodels? And, you know, because in general, I'm in favor of reach codes. I think they're a good thing. I just, this particular one just feels a little bit intrusive.
Anyone want to take that?
Lauren, is there any limitation to removing that or limiting, limiting as suggested in the code?
I believe that if the council wanted to make that change, they could do that. I, again, I see Taylor's hand is up, but I will certainly turn to her. I just wanted to mention on the question of new construction, the state code currently in the 2025 cycle does require electric readiness for new construction. So if the town does nothing at all here, the state code already requires this for new construction. What is proposed here is an effort, again, to go above and beyond what the state is requiring. And one other thought on the utility of requiring a reach code like this for remodels is to prepare for the Bay Area Air Quality Management District's rules, zero NOx emissions standards for appliances. That is one consideration that owners might want to prepare for future electrification. But I will turn it over to Taylor for further comment.
Thank you, Lauren. Those are a couple of my comments. Another note that I will make is that other jurisdictions are largely adopting this language for electric readiness where they are bringing forward a reach code. So some recent examples are Los Altos and Saratoga both adopted electric readiness language with their two-way AC. That was not exactly the same as what you see today, because you're adopting this from previous measures, but it's very similar in terms of its intent here for the water heaters. One potential benefit of requiring this at this point in time is that you already have an electrician coming to deal with your panel, and therefore, it could be a lower-cost time to install something like this for the water heater, particularly because that's a sensitive appliance, where if you do have to replace it last minute, you are typically not wanting to wait for an electrician to come out and do that electrical work. You want access to your hot water quickly. So that's one of the perceived benefits of including this.
Okay, thank you.
Mary?
I do have a question about the gray water ready infrastructure. Is that part of the, have we gotten to that yet?
That's fine, it's a fine question to ask.
Okay. When you do a remodel, do you have to do all this fancy labeling of the, say, you have a gray water system already in place? Do you have to redo all the labeling and so forth? As it comes across here, it looks like 4.305 gray water ready infrastructure. It's a little bit confusing about when and how you have to do that. All gray water ready systems must be installed.
Greg, could you, could you address that question?
Yeah, hello, Greg McFann, contract building official. The gray water readiness section here is for new construction. If you already have a gray water system, this wouldn't affect that at all.
And this is, but this legalizes gray water?
Gray water systems have been legalized. They've been in the code for a number of years. This is just a, providing, it's similar to the EV ready and the electric ready. It's, this is the gray water ready. It's just some additional piping. So in case you want to go to that.
Very exciting.
Can I follow up on this?
Yes, sure.
So I don't remember the details, and maybe, Greg, you could follow up. I know at Willow Commons, there was some issue with, they were trying to put gray water in, and West Bay wouldn't take it, or some, I don't know, I don't remember all the details, but I remember we had a set of requirements that they had to meet that basically then sort of couldn't get used. So it just seemed like this is one of these bureaucratic knots. So I guess I just want to make sure that we've basically untied, cut, whatever the appropriate metaphor for that knot is. Because I remember that, you know, the developer of Willow Commons was pretty frustrated that they had to put all this stuff in, and then basically, is my understanding, couldn't use it. So I don't remember all the details. I just ask maybe that we follow up and make sure that if there's additional work that needs to be done to make sure that gray water is a viable option, that that would have high value.
Yeah. Can I follow up on that as well?
Yes, you're next.
So I do know the details for that one. If a property is on sewer, you know, handled by West Bay Sanitary District, West Bay Sanitary District does not allow gray water. So it's a complete conflict with this regulation for those properties that are on sewer. Now, that's not a lot of properties right now in Port Dula Valley. Obviously, if you're on a septic, then it makes a lot of sense to require gray water. But I really think we need to put an exception into this regulation, that if you're on sewer, you are, you're not required to do that. And one of my questions is, what is the process to add exceptions into this document, given that this is a first read?
No.
No. I can respond to the procedural question, but then I would ask Greg, if he could speak a little bit more to the, to the technical details. Procedurally, this would be an opportunity for council to make any changes to the code, whether it's an exception language or striking any provisions. At the, so this is the opportunity, there is, of course, going to be a second reading of this ordinance, but at the second reading, that is really not the opportunity to make changes, because any substantive changes made at a second reading basically requires a reintroduction of the ordinance. So, you know, so this happens all the time that councils, you know, this is a public hearing, we're getting feedback, you're hearing feedback from your constituents, and so long as these are changes that, you know, staff can actually make kind of on the fly, it's perfectly appropriate, and we'll be prepared to do that. But I would like to turn it over to Greg, if you have any additional information relative to Councilwoman Flynn's question.
Yeah, it's concerning to me that the district doesn't allow it, because it's allowed by state code for gray water systems. But this amendment is specifically for readiness. It's for new buildings. I, if we want to do anything at all, I would suggest that there be a provision that the building official could waive it if there were conflicts, or town could waive it if there are conflicts. That might be something to add in there. So you still have the language for most of the properties, and we can work with the district to see what that issue was and see if we can iron that out. But they shouldn't be forbidding, it's hard to imagine why they would be forbidding gray water system.
It's an issue with the flow, the flow in their pipes. They're concerned about the flow in their pipes if, if a property is diverting the majority of their liquid effluent, so that they would only be left with toilets and kitchens. So they felt that's, they're, they're arguing that it's not adequate to enable flow.
And Greg, were you proposing that we allow the building inspector to waive it if there's conflicts for all potential conflicts or just in this one narrow instance?
I would think if there were conflicts with another agency who has jurisdiction.
Okay, and not necessarily just gray water, but just if there's a conflict with another agency?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Okay, other question.
Why, why wouldn't we put that into the code? No, no, he's suggesting that the building official would have discretionary approval. That's, to me, I'm not understanding that it's actually going to be written into the code.
Well, because we don't know what agencies might be conflicted.
I think.
He's proposing a general.
Wait, we're going to get into discussion. I want straightforward questions right now, and we'll circle back.
Could I be, could I ask if it would be in the code? Because my understanding is you can write into the code that things could be waived if there are conflicts with other agencies.
I think you're, if I understand your question, you want to say if there's a conflict, this does not apply, and you're suggesting if there's a conflict more broadly with fill-in-the-blank, you know, other jurisdictions, that we allow the waiver to be applied. So I want to understand what, what can we do in the code, if that's a legal question, I believe. Is there a recommendation from you all?
I, I think, I would say Greg just gave you a potential remedy to this issue.
A waiver, saying in the code, a waiver is permitted.
Conflicts with other agencies. The building official would have that discretion.
And Rebecca, what is it that you were?
Well, I'm not understanding whether that's actually going to be written into the code as an exception. A waiver is available if it conflicts with a agency and the building code, building official will have discretion to waive this stuff, or is it's going to be a policy that we're going to have in the, in the planning and building department, and the code official will know that they can do, but it's not actually going to be written into the code as an exception.
Greg, do you want to clarify?
Yeah, the, the code already allows this. The building official has the authority to interpret the code and uses discretion to waive when there's discrepancies with other codes. And that happens like when there's, between the fire and the building code, that, that happens periodically. So it's already written into the administrative section of the code. It doesn't need to be added additionally.
Well, I have to push, well, I'm getting into discussion, but I think, I think we discussed, we need to discuss this a little more in the discussion. Maybe moving on to some of the other questions I have. So the energy code, the new energy code, I'm actually absolutely thrilled that it's slowly catching up with the green building and sustainable and resilient building processes. I did take class recently on the new energy code, and what I learned was that it's very, it's going to be, the requirement for inspections are now going to be extraordinarily robust in terms of what they're testing for air sealing and that sort of thing. So I'm just asking a question to the town, is if our, our building inspectors are prepared for that, prepared for these new types of inspections, they're no longer to be called hers inspectors, they're going to be called CE inspectors with much broader requirements. So I'm wondering if our town is prepared for that.
Greg, could you respond?
Yeah, yeah, those are, those are third-party inspections, not the town inspectors. The town would accept a third-party report from somebody who's certified to do those.
Okay, thank you. And then we talked about the fact that we're going to drop the all-electric code, which we actually dropped a few years ago. The reach code, was there any ability or talk of actually changing that into sort of a suite of, of options? I know some communities changed their all-electric into a suite of options. Was there any possibility of doing that, or are we were just too late with the ban on any type of new reach codes, and this would have been considered a new reach code?
I can maybe suggest, Lauren, if you want to take a stab at that, but I guess I would note that the, the council would have the option of going further with additional reach codes, but the, the ordinance brought to you today is really to spring forward, you know, what's existing on the books. But there is something called FlexPath, which other jurisdictions are considering, and Lauren knows more about it, and I think Taylor and the PCE team does as well. So I would invite Lauren to explain what that is. But that would be something that the council, I think, would need to prioritize for future year.
Sure. And, yeah, I think Taylor will have additional details, but, so the FlexPath is an additional reach code option, and there is a model code language for it that's also been provided by the statewide Reach Codes team. And generally, the idea with a FlexPath is that there is a numeric goal that buildings are required to meet, but they have a lot of flexibility in how they can reach that goal. And one way to do that might be to electrify certain appliances, but other options include energy efficiency improvements for the building overall, including insulation improvements, windows, ceiling, things like that. So as the name suggests, it's a really flexible path, but I'll, I'll turn it over to Taylor to weigh in with more detail.
Thanks, Lauren. So the trigger for a FlexPath would be a major renovation, so that would look like an addition and/or an alteration. And the specific trigger around that can't, could be set by yourself, so you could decide what that, what you'd want that to be. A common threshold that's being talked about right now in the Bay is 1,000 square feet. So where you are adding or altering 1,000 square feet of an existing building, you would require a certain target score to be met. And that is where you would have a list of options related to efficiency and/or electrification, which all have assigned point values, and then you would assign an overall point value such as 12. So applicants have complete flexibility in how to reach that total points value, whether it be through efficiency measures or electrification measures.
I wanted to clarify, thank you, I wanted to clarify that because of the ban on reach codes, is it my, am I understanding correctly that we wouldn't be even able to do this for another, I don't know, five years or something? Or, or is the, or is the situation that we already have a reach code that we would just modifying it to this?
So the, the ban on reach codes that you're referring to, I believe, is the change in law under AB 130 that was adopted this year, and that does put a moratorium on changes to building standards that affect residential units unless they satisfy one of several exceptions. One of the exceptions is that the change is substantially equivalent to a change that was previously adopted in the jurisdiction. And that is one way to bring in or to readopt a reach code that was already adopted. But another exception applies to local changes that are adopted to align with the general plan, and that encourage electrification, but allow mixed-fuel buildings to be built as part of an adopted greenhouse gas emission reduction strategy. So the town does still have flexibility to adopt a reach code in spite of that more. So the town does still have flexibility to adopt a reach code in spite of that moratorium adopted under AB 130. It just has to satisfy that exception. And in the, the materials related to this ordinance, in our resolution, we have actually made findings that satisfy the requirements of AB 130 for the AC to heat pump reach code ordinance.
So what is involved in just taking this model reach code and popping it in there?
I believe, and again, Taylor can speak to the specifics, but there are policy decisions to be made about what measures the town would want to include in its Flex Path because it does have wide latitude to decide what makes the most sense. So I think there is some tailoring to be done around those decisions and, and Taylor, feel free to jump in if you have more specifics.
That's correct. Typically jurisdictions will take a quick look at permit data to just understand how many projects would be impacted by certain choices, such as that 1,000 square foot threshold we had talked about and looked at the associated permit valuations as well. So there's a little bit of background research that can be done into that policy. However, reach codes can be adopted at any time in the cycle. So they do not have to be adopted now in conjunction with the 2025 energy code and building code adoption. They could be adopted at any point going forward that you see fit.
But in our situation where we're now planning to repeal that relevant code, reach code, are we going to be able to go back in three years and say, oh, we want to re-adopt this newer version of that old code that we had? Or are we, you know, preventing ourselves from having that option?
If you're referring to the repeal of the all electric requirement? I think yes. Repealing that code now does not impede your ability to adopt a different reach code going forward. Because the other reach codes that we are considering are vastly different from the all electric requirement. And in order to have sort of, you know, ridden on the coattails of that previously adopted reach code, anything you propose would have to be substantially equivalent. So that's the requirement in state law. And I don't think we could argue that any of these, these reach codes we're talking about today are actually substantially equivalent to that one. So repealing the all electric requirement does not impact your ability to adopt something different going forward.
Okay, other questions? I'm gonna go next because I haven't had mine, but you go, you go first.
Okay, can I just quickly ask, back to the AC versus the HVAC? Obviously there are not as many AC units in the Bay Area. So why did, why are we not targeting HVACs? Because they're one of the biggest gassing emitters around and they're most, the most expensive. So if someone's pulling out an AC unit to put in a heat pump, like why would we not include HVACs in the code?
If you're, when you say HVAC, are you referring to like a gas furnace?
Exactly, yes.
So following the California Restaurant Association case, a jurisdiction cannot prohibit the use of a gas appliance. So you wouldn't be able to specifically say you have to get rid of your furnace and install an electric appliance instead. That is no longer allowed after Berkeley. And Taylor, please chime in with additional information.
Yes, thank you for your question. So the intention of this two-way AC code actually comes from a voluntary tier that was in the Cal Green state code. So that was kind of the origin point for this reach code. It's focused on ACs, as you mentioned, not on the furnace component. We are considering for the future a reach code like the one you're talking about right now. So where a gas furnace is being replaced, installing several, or allowing several options there for a reach code. That's not something that's available today and particularly the cost effectiveness study is not available today. So that just the air conditioner piece is being focused on right now. That being said, there are the Bay Area Air District rules coming into effect specific to gas furnaces in 2029. So at that point in time, a reach code around that topic would be duplicative because it's already required by the air district.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. One is on the conversion of the AC to the heat pump, the alternate. You said there's some other ways of getting flexible approaches to efficiency if you want to keep your AC. Can you give me a sense of what those are? Are they particularly onerous or expensive? Taylor, your hand up.
Thank you, I'm happy to speak to that. So there are two different situations that could require slightly different efficiency measures, but they are largely going to be the same. So in the case that a project is not modifying their ducts when they're replacing their air conditioner, then they will need a higher fan efficacy, refrigerant charge verification, and they will add R49 insulation to their attic. In the case that the applicant decides to replace their ducts, then there would be higher fan efficacy, refrigerant charge verification, and then R8 duck insulation. Oh, sorry, I mentioned, I forgot to mention for the first situation, there's R49 insulation in the attic and air sealing at the ceiling plane.
Okay, thank you. In terms of, sorry, I'm getting a little confused because you have the state, the federal preemption we're trying to avoid. And then we're looking at what we did a while ago. So we have local, state and federal pulls here. So which apply, does any of the above, since I think I misinterpreted this, apply only to new construction? Like, like a high level reaction to that?
When you say any of the above, do you mean the, the reach code options in the, the reach codes in the ordinance?
Yes.
No, neither of these options apply to new construction. They both apply to existing buildings.
Okay, okay. What, with regard to the gray water, is this, which level of those laws is this coming from? Is it a state requirement? Is that right?
It's a modification of the state code, yes.
What is the state code?
The state code's kind of, well, state code allows gray water systems. This is requiring that you have, that you prep a house for gray waters. It's an additional piping, some thought process as to where you would put a tank and, and the, the, the ability to have a plug to, to run a pump. It's not requiring gray water, but it's requiring you to have the infrastructure in place to do so.
To do it. And that's beyond the state requirement. State is enabling or allowing and we're having a requirement, okay?
Right.
And in terms of ways of thinking about this, because it's been three years, I don't, you know, this is a pretty targeted set of edits to achieve compliance and enforceability is the way I started looking at it. What is the, what is the downside of not passing something by January 2026? What's the risk?
If the town does not adopt anything to be effective on January 1st, 2026, then the state codes as written without any modifications go into effect and are enforceable locally.
Okay. And that means we lose some of the modified local approaches that we're contemplating today. Because what I'm, what I'm trying to get my bearings on is I thought we were doing something really targeted, but if we want to get more, more ambitious, so to speak, that might take more time. So I'm just trying to figure out what we're really trying to drive for and why. Say we miss that date for whatever reason and we want to impose something a little more sophisticated in February. Is there any reason why we couldn't do that if we blow by January?
No, there's nothing stopping you from adopting changes at a later date.
Okay, those are my questions. So then, okay, one more.
About the fire code? We are adopting the current fire code as written in this particular situation. And then we're going to be considering in December, the fire code that's modified by Woodside Fire Protection. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so at what point should we be bringing up some of the changes that Woodside Fire Protection District is proposing that are not in alignment with a lot of what the residents and others have mentioned? There's one in particular related to address signs that Woodside Fire Protection is requesting that, that there's been a lot of pushback.
I'm gonna try to answer that question. So Woodside Fire is going through a similar process that we're going through in terms of adopting an ordinance with a first reading and a second reading. And they have introduced their ordinance, there will be a second reading on, remind me the date, if you know it.
Next week, November 19th.
Great, thank you. So on November 19th, they will be considering final adoption of that ordinance. So I guess I would urge, you know, residents to voice any concerns to Woodside Fire before November 19th. The ordinance will come forward to council for ratification. The council does have legal authority to ratify or not ratify or ratify. But that is, you know, we're, we're limited, the town is limited in terms of what it could do in terms of enforcement if it doesn't actually ratify their ordinance. So anyway, I guess I would just take this opportunity to urge folks to, to share any concerns, any comments with Woodside Fire prior to their second reading of their ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Last questions before we go to public comment, I'm not seeing any. Okay, public comment, there's no one in the schoolhouse, so Dashal Leeds has had their hand up.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor Husco and Portella Valley Town Council members. My name is Dashal Leeds, I'm the Conservation Coordinator for the Sierra Club Lumber Prieta Chapter. I'm speaking tonight to support the adoption of the building codes, including the reach code provisions containing the updated air conditioning to heat pump language, which, as we've discussed earlier, encourages residents who are already installing or replacing their air conditioner to replace it with an electric heat pump. There's been a ground swell of municipalities that have adopted similar AC to heat pump codes, including Menlo Park, Mountain View, Los Altos, Los Altos Hills, Palo Alto, Sunnyvale, Los Gatos and Saratoga. On November 3rd, the San Mateo City Council directed their staff to create an AC to heat pump ordinance and return to them for adoption. The absolute best time for households to switch to a heat pump is when they're already replacing their air conditioner, actually rather than when they even need to replace their furnace. This is because the existing AC system has the necessary electrical wiring and capacity in place to allow for a drop-in replacement for, with a heat pump. And then one of the amazing benefits of heat pumps is that they can operate in reverse, meaning that you can both heat and cool your home. So residents who install a heat pump can, if they want to, stop using their gas furnace, which further improves air quality and reduces emissions. Heat pumps are extremely efficient appliances, which is why the cost effectiveness study demonstrates that residents will save money each month on their energy bills and will save tens of thousands of dollars over the life cycle of the appliance. This language is flexible, the AC to, the heat pump language will not require a panel upgrade. If installing a heat pump would otherwise require someone to upgrade their panel, then that person actually becomes exempt from the AC to heat pump provisions in this ordinance. Furthermore, in the vast, vast majority of cases, homes will be able to fully electrify on an existing 100 amp panel without the need for a panel upgrade. There is plenty of support available to support residents in acquiring and installing heat pumps, including, including those from Peninsula Clean Energy. Homeowners are eligible for an additional $1,500 rebate for heat pump systems and a $10,000 zero interest loan from PCE. If homeowners are CARE or FARA customers, they're eligible for an additional PCE rebate of $1,000. And if a homeowner is below 80% median income, they're eligible for PCE's full service program, which offers no cost electrification upgrades, which includes heat pumps. So thank you so much for your time and consideration and I hope you adopt the reach codes before you today.
Thank you very much. Dave Cardinal, you're next.
Thanks. I'm a little lost on some of this, but here, here it goes. First of all, there's a difference between education and legislation. And if all these things are a really good idea, then we shouldn't have to mandate them. And I think most residents of the town, if any of them were asked, would say a lot of this doesn't make sense to me. So, I mean, I've got huge investment over the last 25 years in solar, I believe in a lot of this, we have two heat pumps. And we're probably never going to get triggered under these rules, but I, I think there are issues. Like with Willow Commons, it cost Jim and Patty a lot of extra time and money. So saying, oh, we already have a rule for that, well, they're never going to do that project again because they hated the process of working with the town. And who else is going to do affordable housing if the only time we've ever tried, we put all these rules in the way? So the more rules we put in, the more expensive things get. Like the whole thing about all these new inspectors, it's like, what? It's already the most expensive zip code on the planet to do any construction. And we're just going to tack on a, God knows what they cost, nobody here works for free. So I think that's a problem. I think it's going to kill yet more affordable housing, it's just more stumbling blocks. If you want to build affordable housing, you need like seven extra exemptions or whatever, that's not good. And for anybody who's not rich, you know, Craig was mentioning 2,000 for the circuit or whatever, that's a fantasy. It's like 2,000 to get an outlet put in practically. So I appreciate your point, but the numbers, like for us to upgrade our panel would be close to $250,000 because of how far we are from the street. So anybody who's not rich, you know, it's just stupid. We're not going to get a diverse community if nobody can afford to do anything. And I think, you know, an example, well, the whites are an example and the cost of the electric is an example, et cetera. So I'm all for trying to make these things happen. And obviously if we have to adopt the state code, that, that's a minimum. But I don't know, ordering people around for the sake of, I don't want to say political agenda, I, I do believe we have to save the planet. But without really asking them, like everybody involved is a, you know, climate fanatic, which is fine. But I, I, I don't know, it pisses everybody off I know in town who's not a billionaire. So I want to pass that along as another input that I haven't heard tonight is the residents. So thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right, I don't see any other hands online. Oh, one more, Kristi C.
Yeah, I'd like to see residents make their own decisions rather than reach codes or reaching beyond the state laws. And I think individuals can do their green codes and their red codes when they want to. And we at minimum need to adopt the state codes and I'm gonna, that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any other hands right now, so we'll bring it back for discussion at council. There's a lot here, right? It's a big set of regulations and, and laws. To me, I think we all need to comment on, would you move forward with the targeted suggestions that are before us? Would you do nothing and just let the state code take over with the potential to bring back once we have more time or more thoughts around these issues? And just want to understand your, your thinking. So if you could hone in on where you want to end up on here and then we'll come around again. I'm not trying to limit discussion, but I think these are complicated concepts. I want to make sure everybody says what, what you're prepared to do right now, subject to further discussion. I'll start, Mary, do you want to start?
The, the question is somewhat beyond me because I don't completely understand what the options are. But I, I would say my feeling about this going in was these are state requirements, we've got to do them, let's do them. Federal requirements, and yes, let's go ahead and do that. And I don't see anything in the reach codes that was, is detrimental. But I do hear the idea that generally we were all. I do hear the idea that generally, we were all trying our very best to make the green decision. And yes, any help we can get in making the green decision is of benefit. So, my initial thought is, yes, go ahead and accept the recommendations without a lot of REACH codes.
Mary, I just want to refine it because if we do nothing, the state law comes in, and our local refinements are not enforceable anymore, right?
Yes.
And so, that's option one, is literally do nothing and let the state come in and those regs would take over. What's before us now is a combination of avoiding direct conflict with the state and federal law, which, again, would be a default. But it's also layering in 2022 refinements that we tailored.
That we worked hard on.
Yeah. So, I don't know if that helps. And I'm going to invite you to ask questions so you feel comfortable.
I'm hoping by the end, I will understand what we're going to gain from making these adjustments.
Okay. So, you agree we have to do the state?
Whatever it takes to move ahead is my basic feeling about it. We want to get, we want to get this in place by January.
Okay. Craig?
I think I'm generally okay. I guess I feel like I came into this feeling like I understood it better than I do now. I just want to be clear. So, in addition to adopting the state codes, are we doing anything more than the two REACH codes that are described? It sort of seemed like there's a bundle of other things that are being, that were special. I get confused. So, there's the gray water. Were there other things? Because that's what I found a little bit. So, it's just basically the gray water and the AC and the electrical panel, water heater, that's it?
And repealing those two that we already had, but we.
Right. But the repeal, I mean, that, I mean, either we've done it or it's done for us because it's illegal. So, I don't have any issue with that. So, I think I'm comfortable with these refinements. I'm not super happy with the sort of forcing somebody to put in a circuit for a water heater. But I do find it compelling that if a water heater breaks, it's not like you go, "Oh, well, let's go look for an electrician and let's spend like two weeks trying to get somebody to come in and put this." It's like, if your water heater breaks, you kind of have to replace it like today or tomorrow. And I guess for me, on balance, putting in the circuit, as much as it pains me to have these kind of requirements, makes sense. I wish it was a little more flexible in the fact that this 120 volt technology is coming along. But I do appreciate that having it ready to be able to put an electric water heater in, if your gas water heater or your resistant water heater breaks down, that does make sense to me. So, I'm either willing to sort of go with what we have, or if it's not too onerous to modify it to allow a little bit more flexibility in what kind of circuit you put in.
So, I fully support REACH codes. You know, we're trying to cut greenhouse gases, buildings. It's the second area of emissions after cars. So, I absolutely support REACH codes. And I absolutely support fully pre-wiring. You know, when you do it in conjunction, like the city of Palo Alto has a program where, you know, they've got magnets on their water heaters. And when someone's water heater dies, the city helps them. And I know we don't have the money and the staff, but I'm just using it as an example. But with the rebates from PCE, that they then help people, because things are already pre-wired, but they help people to put in new water heaters. So, within 24 hours, and it costs the residents about $250 is what the city manager told me recently, total. And these are, these like new water heaters are like $8,000, right? They're insanely expensive. So, I totally support that. Gray, but I'm going to move on to the gray water because the gray water situation is really tricky. Our systems, you know, we already have put in one system generally for our housing and our building stock. Gray water doesn't always, people don't know what to do with gray water. So, like, we could, because we have so many leaks often, do like, but then the realtors will come after us. But, you know, new toilet requirements at point of sale, kind of ideas. So, oftentimes, and, you know, whenever you touch a remodel, you have to put in these new toilets, but they don't do it at point of sale. And we could also require some sort of, but this is, again, beyond the scope of what's on the agenda. But I'm just saying, the type of things you could do, that you could do new piping to require getting rid of the leak possibilities that people often don't know is happening when they buy a house or even an inspection. But we're not, that is beyond the scope. So, I absolutely support, you know, the REACH code idea. I'm less sure about the gray water situation. So, that's my, and I will also say, like, city of Sunnyvale looked at purple pipe. Gray pipe is for, you know, from your kitchen sink. And purple pipe is also from your, from your kitchen sink, not your toilet. And they basically found that it was cheaper to build a recycling plant than to re-pipe everything, right? So, because they were looking at that. City of San Francisco has repiped a ton and has all these purple pipe requirements, and they have not built their recycling plant yet. So, so just, that's my opinion on the gray water, which I love the idea. But we, most, you know, most of us do not use special soap for washing our clothes and things like that. So, I'm hesitant to require a gray water situation.
Even the being ready as opposed to requiring the gray water setup?
Right.
And this is new construction. This is not a remodel.
Yeah. Because, I mean, gray water versus purple pipe versus black pipe. So, black pipe is what you, you know, is connected to your toilets. So, I definitely love the idea of gray water, but also generally, you do have to have special soap. And a lot of people don't know about the special soap requirements and things like that. So.
Would you, this was in the REACH code from 2022, if I understand correctly. Would you affirmatively take that out now?
Because, I mean, it seems, I don't know, I'd love to ask Steve whether, have people been able to work with it? Like, I built, you know, I built my ADU in '22, and I wasn't required to put it in. So, I'm, I don't, like, I was, yeah.
I think as Greg had explained, it was just to be ready, not to install it. So, there were just pieces that you could be ready. My opinion would be, because I haven't analyzed it, is that if it's required to just do that minimal part, that's done automatically with the construction of the property.
As somebody who's had an illegal gray water system for 30 years, I can say that it works wonderfully, and everybody should do it.
It's not legal. Okay.
Not legal.
Right, right. You can be comfortable now. Rebecca?
Okay. In general, I support the new codes. But I would like to put a couple exceptions in there. I want to clarify that all of the REACH codes we've discussed, including the gray water, were all passed and are all in, have been enforced in Portola Valley since 2022. So, we're just modifying what's already been in the code. As much as I would adore having the FlexPath available, I know that we have no staff in our planning and building department to take that on. So, unless it was just, like I said, a question of taking the model code and plopping it in, which it sounds like it's not, I'm going to have to give that up for this moment until we actually have funding and staff. And I hope that becomes a priority in a few years because it's very, very important that we catch new buildings and get them to be all electric from the very beginning. Because once you put in a gas stove, and once you put in, spend all that money putting in a gas infrastructure and a gas line, and you're willing to put up with having benzene in your home, which is what happens when you have a gas burning stove, you're putting all sorts of incredible toxins into your home, and you're increasing the asthma for your children in your home when you insist on having gas stoves. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to take care of that with this REACH, with this set of new codes. In terms of the two REACH codes that we're planning to keep, I would want to potentially consider adding an exception that if a home already has a 120 circuit next to their current gas water heater, that they would not be required to upgrade that to 240. But they would be required to install an electric heat pump water heater when that gas water heater fails. So, that may already be the law, but I'm not sure it is until 2026, maybe, or '27. But if we put in that exception to allow them to just not have to put in new circuit because they already have a 120 right there, then I do think we should require them to upgrade to a heat pump water heater at 120 volt when their water heater fails. So, that would kind of get us around the issue. And they would have to understand that the choices would be limited and the prices may not be the same if they were going to go with a straight-up 241. For the gray water, I absolutely want an exception written into that code, that if a property is on sewer, they are not required to plumb out their house for gray water. I was on the Sustainability Committee when that ordinance got put into place, and I actually fought against it quite a bit, and I lost. But I'm going to bring back up the issues that are involved because this is an example of an ordinance that was a great idea back, you know, we talked about this for years, back in the late 18, like, the late, how do we say, the late 90s? No, the late 2019s, 2018s, the pre-plague period. This was before West Bay Sanitary District developed their huge sewer processing plant off of Sand Hill Road. They now take all of our effluent, and they clean it to make non-potable water to then feed the golf courses in the area. So, it's less of a critical need for us to preserve the water for gray water. And the main reason it was put in place was to discourage the creation of lawns in the town. So, that was one way of limiting the size of lawns because people had to provide a source of water to feed that lawn. So, we weren't wasting potable water on lawns that typically nobody even walks on except the gardener. So, in that respect, there is, part of that ordinance is, it limits the amount of lawn that you can have sewer. In that situation, I would leave it there. Again, the main portion that concerns me the most is the one where people are required to put in electricity and plumb their pipes, double-plumb the pipes essentially for gray water. And if you're on sewer, West Bay will not certify or will not allow you to hook into their system if you put in a gray water system. So, it's just an enormous expense that people shouldn't have to deal with. And I respect that our building inspector said that the code already allows the building inspector to waive this, but I can tell you that it doesn't work in practice. So, I want that exception written right in there, that if a property is on sewer, they are not required to put in, to prepare for, to become gray water-ready. And then, I want to add in addition that, and this was one of the things I argued back a few years ago, was that a gray water system, and I'm 100% proponent for gray water, I wrote, I rewrote the manual for gray water for the town, based on San Francisco's manual. So, I'm 100% on. I've got my Laundromat Landscape gray water going, and it works great. If you require electricity to run a pump, and you have to have, which also requires you to have filtering, to be able to take your gray water and use it on your property, it makes no sense, absolutely no sense. A lot of people in this, in the town have, their property is kind of above their home, so they have to use a pump to push the gray water up there. It makes no sense to spend several thousand dollars putting in a system to save, you know, $300 worth of water, you know. So, again, I think there needs to be a couple of exceptions in there. One is if, one is I just, you know, if a system requires a pump and a filter, if anybody's ever had to deal with changing a gray water filter, it is one of the most absolutely foul and disgusting experiences you could ever, you know, handle in your life. So, to me, it's just, people are not going to be changing filters. People are not going to be ever using the system. They're going to be spending a fortune plumbing for it and putting in electricity for it for something that's never, ever, ever going to be used. So, I think we just have to be realistic by the fact that West Bay Sanitary District is now using our water more responsibly, and we don't need to force our residents to spend a fortune, you know, putting in electricity and plumbing for something that's just going to sit there and just cost them money. So, that's where I'm at with that. And then, the last thing I wanted to talk about was the fire code. And again, I will send a note over to the West, to Woodside Fire. They have a REACH, well, we're calling it a REACH code, but a local change for the address. The 501 code, I think it's 501, yeah, 501.1, address identification. In the actual code that we're talking about today, address identification just requires, you know, a certain size on your house. Or if your house is not visible in the street, it's required to have your address, you know, four inches or bigger at the street. The modification that Woodside Fire Protection is proposing or is going to.
Rebecca, I'm getting a little worried that this is beyond what we're supposed to be talking. We're not agendized for this. So, if it relates back to what you would do with ordinance, that's fine. But I'm, like, we can't open that up and discuss it.
Well, I just want to let people know that they are requiring illumination. So, you're going to be required to put electricity to illuminate your address. So, and the code actually allows for reflective lights, and Woodside Fire wants to have it illuminated. So, just, I want people to be aware of that in case others want to write in with concern. So, that's where I'm at. Thanks.
So, we've got a wide range of views here, frankly, because I think, if I understand correctly, Mary wants to get us compliant with state and federal laws, needs to comment further on what else she might do, either to implement our existing REACH codes or modify them. Craig, you're still thinking about the 120 volt, you know, how can we, what should we be doing around that? Ellen, you're supporting the REACH codes. Gray water, probably not. And Rebecca, I hear you're okay with the REACH codes. You have some more thoughts around the water heater. I don't, if I understood you correctly, though, and I need to refine this so I can comment, is, I thought you said if, if they're, you're not going to require them to upgrade to 240 volts, but you would require a heat pump afterward. I thought, and I'm not sure, my question is, is that legal? Because I thought the alternate flexibility was in response to avoiding preemption federally. So, if, like, I don't know that that's something that can work. Yeah.
Going to check in with Lauren to see if you could help respond to this question and make sure that you heard the suggestion from Councilmember Flynn.
Yeah, I believe.
You got that suggestion?
I did. Thank you. Yeah, I do think that there is a legal risk there from simply requiring that appliance to be changed. And that's why the additional flexibility is helpful.
Yep. Okay. All right. So, my own comments are, this is really much more difficult than I thought it would be. If we do nothing, the state standards apply. And in order to make an informed choice on some of these nuances, which can be important, I'm not minimizing the importance, I don't feel like I know enough. So, to me, I would either do nothing or go ahead and adopt the current proposal. I would, frankly, I would not make the requirement of the 240. I do think we have so many, we're difficult to build in. I think we got to get more builder-friendly. And if there's a compelling case to be made for. for why these alternates, alternative approaches are, are suitable. I don't, I don't think we should be telling people when to spend when they're premium priced versus much more available. I think we, building here is incredibly expensive. So I could be convinced to hunt, do nothing, let the state take over and have these more important discussions another day to do something like more consensus driven or my preference, because I do think we got to have something that we can enforce. And I want to respect what went before largely with some minor tweaks. I'd be willing to talk about a minor tweak or two. So I, I don't think tonight or even in the near future, we have the bandwidth to be really subtle about a lot of this. Not that I want to be defeatist on it, but we've got full agendas coming up. And I think this was put on the agenda right now to get us in compliance so we can enforce our code. And that's my objective. I'd be either fine doing it with, without the 240 volts because I do think that's something we could take care of. Or we can, you know, do nothing and figure this out when we have bandwidth for it, which might not be in the near term. So let's go around again.
So respectfully, I'd love to make a motion actually because hopefully I didn't write anything, but I would like to actually propose that we actually do adopt the reach code with the exception of a dedicated 120 volt that already exists near a water heater. So often true for tankless gas heaters. And so, but I, so I would recommend that. I will leave it up to others about the gray water, what they want to do. But I do think pre-wiring is important, respectfully, Mayor. So because once you open up those walls, like if we don't pre-wire now when things are, when they are being touched, it can actually cost people a lot more later. So, so so respectfully.
Yeah.
That was motion.
Can you just say it again, what you're proposing?
Reach code.
Okay, I am not, this, my motion does not include the gray water. Actually, I'm letting you guys decide and I will, but I would, you know, adopt the 2025 California Building Standards Code with local amendments to those codes with all the pre-wiring. Except with an exception for hot water, hot water heat pump pre-wiring if a dedicated 120 volt already exists near the water heater. Have I forgotten anything?
So you're a question mark on the gray water, whether to take it?
So my motion does not include the gray water at this point.
Um, meaning no change or because it's already in there right?
Right. Yeah. So I guess, yes, no change. Believe it as is.
Okay.
So.
Rebecca?
I'm sorry, except for exemptions with uphill situations that Councilmember Flynn noted. That they, those would be exempt.
Rebecca, you want to comment? I mean, we couldn't have a second or we can comment.
So if I understand correctly.
If you want to have a discussion, it's got to either get seconded or not.
Well, okay. So do we have a second? Mary's a second. Okay.
Second.
Okay. All right.
So I, I just want to clarify the motion because I'm kind of slow here today. So the current code, what, what currently is being proposed is that if, if a property is upgrading its electric panel, they need to leave sufficient space for future appliances and they need to install 240 volt circuit at the hot water heater. You're, Helen, you're proposing that they have to install. If there's a 120, they don't need to install anything or?
It's an exception and it's near the heat, for the hot water heater where a tankless already exists. So that's an exception that I've asked for. But otherwise, all 240 volt would be required. Well, as needed and not, yes.
Okay. So the exception is if there already is 120 at the hot water heater, that they don't have to change that. Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that. For the gray water, I would have an exemption for uphill. I would have an exemption for properties on sewer. And I'd want that in the ledge, in the code.
And I welcome that amendment.
Further discussion? Oh, is the amendment?
She just accepted.
Yeah, you accepted it. So go ahead, Mary. Do you have any?
Do I get to second the amendment? Yes.
So further discussion, Craig, do you want to?
I just, the leaving room for future appliances, is that in our extension or is that part of the state? I'm gotten a little bit confused on what's where. Who, who can answer? Maybe it's Taylor still on? Taylor, Taylor?
Hello, yes, I can answer. So the reach code portion is triggered when there is a replacement or an upgrade to the main electric panel. And that's where there will be the requirement for specific electrical capacity in the breaker space in the panel.
Right, I understand that. But what the question I was asking is that's part of the state versus ours.
That's part of the, the reach code. So that's not part of the base state code. That's going beyond.
Okay, got it. All right. Okay. So do you want discussion now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm going to vote against this. I'm totally in favor of the AC repairs becoming a heat pump. I think that's the right thing. I think that we shouldn't require the 240 and we shouldn't require gray water at all. I, I think it's too complicated to say uphill downhill. I just, that seems crazy to me. I would leave the room for future appliances. So I think that's important and that's easy to do. If you're putting in a new panel, it's just buying a bigger panel.
So, so explain that to me, room for future?
So, so basically need to leave breaker space. So when you buy a panel, instead of buying a 20 slot, you buy a 40 slot and then you have enough room for it. So, so I would vote for something like that, but as the current motion that's out there, I will vote against.
I'm sorry, can I just ask you, and I totally support upgrading your panel, but can I just get clarification on why you would not upgrade the, do the pre-wiring while things are open? And we are talking about new construction or remod.
Talking about remodels. And so I'm putting in a new panel and I'm doing a remodel and it costs me, I said a couple thousand dollars. Dave said that was laughable. I don't want to argue about what the price is, but there's no wall open. I don't need to open up a wall to put the panel. A lot of panels on the outside. So if it's new construction, no problem, but that's a different issue. That's not the one. So.
So if we were to break this out into new construction versus remodel, okay. Yeah.
Yeah. My understanding is this was just if you're replacing the electrical panel. If you're putting in a new one, I assume it's whatever the state requires. So does that clarify my, my issue or? Thank you.
Okay. I, I'm where Craig is essentially. So we first have a motion on, or a vote on the first.
I, I guess I would like to just check in with Lauren and our team just to make sure we've got everything. Because I want to make sure when we bring back a second reading, that assuming the motion passes, that we've got everything properly redlined and changed. So I don't know, Lauren, if you have been following this and if you are able to at this point, or if we need to take a break or?
Well, I'm, I'm wondering, I know this is a little out, but if we did a little straw poll without a formal vote, like, do we know if this is even has a chance of passing? Because otherwise it's going to take a long time to redline this. This is a complicated, which is why I don't like it. It's too complicated. So, I mean, do we have three votes for this? This motion that's on the table, I, I said I'm going to vote against it. I think Judith said she was going to vote against it. So it's at least two against. So you're for it as, so basically everything is there.
Everybody depends on me. Can I vote against it if I'm, if I moved it?
Yeah, sure.
Well, is there a simpler, more straightforward motion we could make and get through this?
Yes, I believe there is. You want me to tell you what I would propose in this place and see if it's enough to convince you? Well, I mean, I, I'm, it's part of discussion. I'm not going to make it as a motion. I'm just going to tell you, if this goes down, I will make a motion to this effect, which is if you do AC repairs, you need to replace the heat pump.
Or do the flexible.
Or, or do the flex, yeah, exactly. Thank you. I mean, that, leave that piece as, as written. The 240 volt circuit, I would say no to at this time. And we always have an option later to come back. And the gray water, I, I would take all the gray water out. I, I just don't think that, I, I think Rebecca's argument are compelling. And I think it's a lot of extra work that basically gives us very little value. And then I would make sure that we leave room in the panel. If you're upgrading your panel, that we leave room in the panel for future appliance expansion. So that's basically, I think that captures all the pieces.
And that's for new construction and remodel.
Um, I think this is just a reach code. I think it's just for remodels because, I mean, again, maybe Taylor, Taylor, you can answer this. I'm assuming if you're doing new, there's a different set of rules that, that apply, not the reach codes. Is that correct?
That is correct. In the state code, they have their own electric readiness requirements.
Right. So this is just, just for the reach. And then obviously we'd adopt this, the 2025 state. I mean, it'd be part of my motion. But that, that's what I would propose.
So for the gray water, there's actually two different codes. One talks about the lawn where you have to, you have to provide rainwater or gray water, your options. And if you go over a certain size of lawn. The second one is the one that we've been focusing on is the one where the gray water ready infrastructure. So I understand you want to get rid of that code completely. What's, what about the lawn situation?
So help, help me with the details of lawn.
So the, the lawn is, they want to reduce potable water use on turf. So if you put in a turf of the size of, the requirement is you have to provide a rainwater catchment system to satisfy 50% of the estimated annual water needs for the first 500 square feet of turf installed on the project. And then it would have to be larger if you want more than 500 square feet because you'd have to provide 100% of everything over 500 feet. And the alternative is to install a gray water system to satisfy the irrigation for the water demands for the turf. That was a reach code that was passed in 2022. Yeah, at the time, yeah.
And it's any, basically any lawn.
It's for new, I don't know if it's just new, for all projects with landscape that, that use turf. Yeah.
Yeah, but any amount of turf. I mean, if you had 100 square feet, you'd still.
No, I don't think so.
Are you saying over 500? I thought you said up to 500.
So it's for the first 500 square feet. I, I don't know.
That sounds to be like zero to 500.
Yeah, that sounds a little over the top. Yeah.
When is that triggered if you're doing something new or?
All projects with landscape. So it's. I mean, I guess someone could be doing just a big landscape project.
Right. Do we have guidance on that?
My, my response is that a landscape project is subject to planning permits. So.
Yes.
Greg, Greg might be able to respond to what is the threshold on the building permit side?
It's, the threshold is for anything that requires a permit because that would be the only way you would trigger this. So if it was a project, you were pulling a permit and doing turf. And so the first 500 feet, it's 50% and after that it's 100%. So, so it's any turf and it's 50% for the first 500. But it would only be triggered by a, a permit that had a project including turf.
And do we have a sense of how many, how often this code is triggered? How many homes are putting in 500 square feet or larger lawns?
No, it's, wait, so 500 feet, it's 100%. Below 500, it's 50%. It's any turf. It's, okay, just, okay. And I guess, and maybe related to your question is, you're saying if they're applying for a landscaping permit, like, are there, like, what, why wouldn't you submit for landscaping permit? Like, you don't have to most of the time? And what's, when, when would you and when would you not submit for a landscape permit?
I, I actually don't have the answer to that, but I, I could check. I think I could find out relatively quickly.
I would say that most people are not putting in for landscaping permit unless they're going through the ASCC with a major remodel, frankly. Unless they're building trellises and things like that. If they're just doing a big planting plan, I bet they're not putting in permit. And I don't know if they're required to do it, if they're just putting in new plantings.
Well, landscaping also includes hardscapes. So quite often you're having to have adios, landscaping around pools, et cetera, and those. I know they come in, I don't know how many. I can try to look up the ordinance and give you a little more information.
I mean, I, I feel that it's been effective in reducing people's desire to put big expansive lawns that just waste obscene amounts of potable water. And given that our, we are focusing on climate, we are going into more and more climate change and we are going to be subjected to more and more situations of drought versus huge storms. You know, I'll remind you that this was put in place back when we had gone through five years of drought and we were all having to massively look at water use. So I felt it was very effective to prevent huge lawns going in. And once you don't put a lawn in, then you're, you're not going to be wasting water going forward. So that portion I think is fine personally.
So Mary, then going back to where we were, I think I'd leave that portion, the gray water slash rain catchment in. So this is all an answer to the question you asked me is, you know, is, could there be an alternative? So that's what you have to decide is this alternative versus the motion that's currently on the?
Oh, well, I'd, I'd, I'd prefer the new motion.
Yep. So do we?
That means I second.
I was just actually making the motion and a second. We have one motion on the table. But we can bring a second motion on the table. And then actually the way it works with voting is you actually have them in reverse order.
Right.
So.
Can I also just mention that PCE does have a very, a different pre-wiring that's more cost effective code, model code that PCE has developed that's much more cost effective than what we currently have on the books is my understanding.
Okay, I, I guess I'm, I'm happy to look at this again when we have more time. I, for tonight, I'm going to make the motion that we adopt the 2025 state regulations, that we adopt the AC repairs requiring a heat pump or other upgrades, that we don't require the 240 volt circuit and that we don't require the gray water ready piece, so the plumbing piece. And that we leave in the piece of the code that requires room in the electrical panel for future appliances. Think that covered everything. Did I miss anything? Okay, so that, that would be the motion. Is there a second for that?
I have a second and a, and a motion.
I don't know. Can you second it again?
I'll second.
Can I, can I second the conflicting motion?
You're illegal on your gray water. Just kidding for the record. So I'll, I'll second.
Second.
Okay, so.
Mayor, before we, before you call, call for a vote, I do want to check with my team and Lauren just to, for the sake of preparing the ordinance for a second reading if this passes, that we have exactly the right sections that are going to be stricken. And so I think Lauren's been keeping track here. But if Lauren, if you're going to pop on and, and we can go through the sections that are going to be changed.
Sure. So what I'm hearing is that we are deleting Part C of 4.106.5. So that entirely deletes the provision that says a dedicated 200 volt branch circuit shall be installed within three feet of the water heater. That's deleted. And then we are deleting our modification to section 4.305, which is the gray water ready infrastructure. That entire section is deleted. Everything else stays the same.
Correct. Correct for the gray water. I don't have the other one right in front of me.
Yeah, the other one, I think we had. Yeah, the other one, I think we had said no requiring the 240 if there's a 120 nearby.
No, I I've yeah, no, I'm just saying, just remove the 240. But just put it putting in 120 is can be a relatively easy thing if there's some near power nearby.
Okay, okay, then it seems like you have it.
Can you read the number again for the 220, 240 thing?
Sure, so we are deleting section 1C under 4.106.5.
Okay, thank you. 1C. Do we have actually have a page in the?
I believe it's page 59 of the packet.
In the packet?
On the lower right hand corner, it says 59.
So 59 on the total packet or 59 on the page numbers at the bottom?
59 on the page number in the PDF.
On the PDF thing, yeah, right, so in the packet.
Yep.
4106.5.
So we're deleting the.
C on page 26 or 59, depending on.
Yes. Right here, we're deleting this one, C, the C. Right. We are keeping the planning for future appliances in the panel.
Yes.
We're getting rid of having to to.
Yeah, we're leaving.
Cut up your drywall and.
Right, yeah, we're we're leaving all that we're leaving all the reserves breaker spaces.
We're keeping this, we're keeping that, okay. A little further, we're getting rid of the next one.
Okay, any other like tightening up questions? I think we've got it.
Yeah.
Okay, so then a the vote on Craig's motion, I can call it that.
And I would suggest a roll call.
Roll call vote.
We can't do oral just, I mean, I'm fine.
Discuss more, but.
I mean, but do we have to do roll call? Can we just do a voice vote?
I was I was suggesting a roll call just given the complexities.
Yeah, I didn't know if that was a public hearing thing or.
Let's let's just get it done.
Let's get it done.
Councilmember Walter?
Actually, could you start on the other side, please?
Councilmember Flynn? In the interest of getting it done, I'm gonna support it. Councilmember Hufdi?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you all.
It's done, it's just done.
Now, the second one is the the original one is now mooted, so, yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I mean, these are really complicated concepts. We can see how things are working and going forward, assess where we are. All right, then now we're gonna receive a presentation from the community on the community survey from Godby Research. Who is on to give the presentation?
Hi, Darcy Smith, Town Manager. Yes, we have Mr. Brian Godby of Godby Research, who is here to give the presentation. And just a note to the public, there will be a summary posted on the town's website in the near future.
Okay, and and Brian, just to remind the public who may not be remembering exactly how we got here, I just wanna say that we are we engaged you and and Catherine Lu to help us assess options for a revenue enhancement measure. So with that, take it away.
Great, thank you very much, members of the council. Let me share my screen. Everybody should be able to see the presentation now.
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, well, let's just dive right in then. The purpose of the survey, as the mayor just mentioned, was to look at a variety of different things, satisfaction with the quality of life and perceptions of the town services. We wanted to assess viability of a potential local funding measure to maintain local control and preserve essential town services. We wanted to look at respondent priorities for the town as well as look at informational statements on and how they impacted the measure. There's a wide variety of demographic and behavioral characteristics that we use to initially stratify the sample, but also to to weight the sample. And both of those are to designed to make sure that it is representative of the town of Portola Valley. A little bit more on the methodology. This was a phone and online survey. Phone meaning landline. Yes, there's still a few people that have landline and answer them. And cell calls, obviously, text invites to an online as well as emails to an online. Obviously, the majority has now become online. But we want to have everybody have an equal chance to participate, which is what makes the sample truly random. And so we offer all those different opportunities. The universe was likely November 2026 voters in the town of Portola Valley. We were in the field from the 22nd through the 30th of September. The average phone survey was 25 minutes long. The sample size was 220, which gives us a margin of error of plus or minus 6.37% for the universe. Moving into the data for tonight's summary, we first asked, as I mentioned earlier, about the overall quality of life. And when you add the variant somewhat satisfied together, you get 91% in round numbers. That's a great number, so congratulations. People are very, very happy living in the town of Portola Valley. The next question was the provision of town services. This is at a general level. And again, when you add the variant somewhats together, you see we're about 67%. It's pretty typical that this be lower than the quality of life. And it's also typical that, well, what happened during the pandemic is city services took a general hit and were reduced dramatically. And that's probably what's going on here. In this case, I don't have before and after, but in most of the communities that I do, that's been the pattern. The next question is where we switch gears and got into the potential viability of a conceptual ballot measure. And you see the wording of the question on the right hand side of the slide. It meets all the statewide legal requirements. It doesn't exceed 75 words. It has a tax rate of $10 per thousand. It has a term which is until ended by voters. And it has to show what it how much it would raise on average on an annual basis. And that's about $2 million. When you add the definitely and probably yes together, as we do for feasibility purposes, you see we're at 59%, which is not a bad place to start, given that all they know at this point in the survey is this information in the yellow box on the right hand side of the slide. Even with the margin of error that we talked about earlier, this is still above a simple majority, which is the threshold for this particular measure. The next set of questions no longer had that 75 word limit imposed by state law. So we could ask a variety of different things that you might spend the money on to identify the respondent priorities. And they were all asked in a random order, but the order you see here is based on the responses that we got. We created what we call an intensity scale in which we assign numeric values to each of the responses. You can see that across the bottom of the slide. Much more likely gets a two, somewhat more likely one, somewhat less likely minus one, much less likely a minus two. And that gives you a scale that ranges from a high of two to a low of minus two. And then you can see the responses that we got here next to the burgundy bars. It's also useful to add the much more likely and somewhat more likely together, the percentages, just to put it into the real world context, although it's important to know that that's not the ranking. The ranking is the intensity scale, and that's a much more accurate way of looking at the the differences between the various items. We also put things in tiers. And basically, a tier is a statistical grouping where they're essentially tied. There are numeric differences for sure, and they're reflected here. But each tier is tied within it and is significantly different than the following tier as a group. So in our top tier, in terms of resident priorities, we have maintain vegetation and brush management programs to reduce the chance of wildfire. At the top of the list, provide wildfire preparedness, including brush clearance and safety inspections. Obviously, words matter, but we've tested a variety of items here. Maintain wildfire prevention, a little more pared back, still in the top tier. Maintain rapid 911 emergency response times and police patrols. And then finally, in the top tier, prevent a county takeover of local zoning and planning services. The next tier, while the difference between the bottom of one tier and the top of another tier is not much, it's the whole tier that we're ranking together. So our second tier, we have repaired deteriorating storm drains, prevent failure flooding, water pollution and sinkholes, and then provide evacuation and planning corridor along Alpine Road. The next slide shows the remainder of the respondent priorities. It's Tier Two continued, and we start in the mid 60s with prevent further reductions in town services and then go down to about 61% for maintain pottle repair and street maintenance. And then the final tier is maintaining trails, providing environmental protection in a generic sense, and maintaining town buildings and infrastructures, all in the 50s. The next set of questions is a little more information about the measure, potential measure. It's not as nuts and bolts, we're gonna spend the money on it, it's more the why we would do it. The methodology is largely the same, although the scale is slightly shorter. So while you can compare the percentages here with the previous question, you can't compare the scale. However, the scale still is the most accurate way to rank the items vis a vis each other. Again, in Tier One, at the top, we have the measure will help Portola Valley prepare for natural disasters such as wildfires, earthquakes, flooding, landslides with prevention measures, evacuation planning, and emergency response communications. Second is the measure will allow Portola Valley to maintain its autonomy and be self reliant. The measure protects the town's autonomy and ability to make our own zoning decisions. Is third, the measure would allow the town to financially stabilize, including maintaining an emergency reserve. And finally, the measure will preserve the town as an independent self governing government to protect resident and residents' interests. Those are all in our top tier, and you can see they range from a high of 71 down to 68. So they're all pretty tightly grouped. The second slide is a little bit lower. It's kind of in the low 60s, so not as important as those items on the first slide, but certainly not unimportant. The measure will not increase annual property taxes for homeowners staying in their homes. That's true, since this is a transfer tax and it only kicks in when you sell your home. The measure without the measure, a major fire, earthquake, or other disaster could wipe out the reserves. Measure requires independent financial audits. Measure will help Portola Valley quiet quality of life and local character. And finally, the measure will continue Portola Valley's high standards for fiscal accountability. So at this point in the survey, people have learned more about the measure. And we come back to our ballot question, same wording as the first time around, and ask them, now that you know more, how would you vote? And you see, we get about a 2.1% increase in the definitely and probably yes. So that, again, for our feasibility analysis, is a good indication. It certainly exceeds the simple majority, exceeds the simple majority even when you apply the margin of error, which is 6%. So this could be as low as 55, but that's still above the simple majority threshold for the general purpose measure like a transfer tax. So that's the data that we have in our summary for this evening. Certainly happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. All right, just a reminder for people that this is receiving the report. There's going to be a long set of further follow on activities going forward. But for now, I think questions need to be focused on, do you have questions on the report itself, not next steps and third steps? So we'll open it up. Rebecca, do you want to go first?
I actually don't have questions.
Mary?
I don't have questions.
Craig?
I'm fine, thank you.
Hey, I have a couple. I just want to clarify why we chose the real estate transfer tax to use. It would be very helpful, I think, for the public who may or may not be following the play by play to understand, you know, we have not selected that as the final that is going to be a future discussion. But Darcy, I don't know if you can put context around why that was the question that was focused on.
Yes, Darcy Smith, Town Manager. That was the question that was focused on because we were advised by our consultants, Brian Godby and Catherine Lu of the Lu Edwards Group to select one item to poll on. It's just preferred given our sample size of 200. So we just performed the survey on that item, but there have been no decisions made.
And the idea is to get a sense of what issues are front of mind going to be important to people as we go forward, making a decision. Okay, thank you. The other question is just for Brian, which is 1.08, we got like right around one a lot. Is that good? Like, do you ever see two?
Yeah, let me go back to that. You never see two. A 1.08 is good. It's a bit abstract because it's looking at the intensity. And the reason we do that is you could have something that's 40% much more likely and 20% somewhat more likely, that's 60. You could also have the reverse. It could be 20% much more likely and 40% somewhat more likely, which is also 60%, but clearly not the same 60%. So our our kind of abstract number is designed to scale this based on intensity. And then you look at the percent, after you've ranked the items vis a vis each other, then you can look at the percentages and you say, wow, 78% in round numbers, which is for that 1.08, that's really pretty strong. That's substantially above the two, the simple majority threshold for this kind of measure. Obviously, as you get down into the next slide, you know, we're we don't have that kind of advantage. But the wildfire component that you see here and the zoning or the the autonomy component as reflected in Item H, those are all, you know, in the high 60s to mid 70s. And then if we jump to the next slide, that's also 1.08. Again, it doesn't compare with the previous 108, but the 71% little bit lower than that 78, but still, you know, in the 70s. And that's certainly a very good place to be vis a vis the simple majority threshold.
Okay, so just at a very high level without getting into specifics because a lot of this is numbers without like an intuitive mean meaning. You're you're feeling like these these results were, you know, robust and and in the range of what we can use for planning purposes going forward. You have more experience, I'm not quite sure how to ask that, but.
Yeah.
I'm sure you're satisfied with the result.
I think these numbers are very strong. I mean, first of all, the respondent priorities give us a path in terms of what people are interested in funding. Again, as the town manager indicated, there's a lot more work to be done and a lot more listening to do to town residents as you go forward. And the but the increase from 59 to 61, while not seemingly large, that's pretty good. It leaves us in a good place vis a vis the margin of error and the simple majority threshold. So a lot of times, transfer taxes don't do that well. So I think this is quite encouraging.
Okay, those are my questions. Unless there's any others, we'll go to public questions. And there's one online, there's nobody in the schoolhouse, one online, Karenowski, go ahead. And there's one online, there's nobody in the schoolhouse, one online, Karen Askey, go ahead.
Oh, hi. Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I was not the recipient of the survey and so bear with me. One is on, I think it's your slide informational statements two. I think you had a lower number at the top and a higher number at the bottom. And I just was curious on that, if you, if you could bring that up again. You had 62.4% at the top and 63.8 at the bottom. And that was inconsistent with the way the other slides were?
Yeah, it's actually not inconsistent because the ranking is based on the intensity scale. And the reason we do the intensity scale is again, you could have an item that is 40% much more likely and 20% somewhat more likely, that equals 60. But you could have the reverse as well. It could be 20% much more likely and 40% somewhat more likely. That's still 60, but clearly in terms of intensity, the two are not anywhere near the same. And, but you're still adding, so that's how the scale works. And that's the, the 1.01, I can't share it because the timer is taking up the sharing. But the 1.01 is higher than the .95. Statistically, they're in the same group, so there's not a big difference. But sometimes you wind up with a 62.4 representing the 1.01. And the 63.8, which just seems higher, but is actually lower because of the intensity and the relationship between the much more likelies and the somewhat more likelies.
Okay, a couple of other questions, please. Did that, did your slides list all of the priorities that were mentioned or were those just the ones that rose to the top?
This is just a summary in deference to council time, there were more, for sure.
Okay, and then my, my last question is just, it looked like the thing that came up that people had more intensity for were nat-, you know, helping with natural disasters, wildfire, et cetera. And my question on that, is that actually how the money's going to get used? Or is it really to meet our operational expenses and fund the sheriff's contract? And a concern I have is, I guess, the positioning of that and how the money's really going to get used. I'm just throwing that out for food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't know, Brian, if you have any thoughts to put around in terms of the sample ballot language? If you don't mind calling that up?
Sure, I think I can reshare again now.
If you can.
Yeah. So the wording that we tested, let me go this way. You can see the wording that we tested. Focused on wild, if you look at the bullets, a lot of what's in the introduction clause is sort of boilerplate. And certainly, the, the last clause is, is legal requirements, which gives you the ability to modify the bullets. And wildfire prevention is at the top, emergency response was in that emergency preparedness section that we looked at. Trail and recreation were certainly important, and I don't want to say they weren't, but they were of lesser importance. As was environmental protections at a general level. General Government Services has to be in there for legal purposes. So there might be some tweaking in here that we could, of the ballot question. But I think we're not at that stage in the process yet. Again, as the town manager mentioned, there's a lot more work to do, a lot of listening to residents' opinions. You know, over the next six or seven months before we get to, to the finalizing that, to their question.
If I can paraphrase, it was more of a straw man proposal to request on an interview.
Yeah, sticking a, sticking a stake in the ground here at the outset and figuring out what we get back from the survey in terms of the preferences and priorities and then, you know, continuing to reach out.
Okay, all right. Darcy, do you have additional?
Well, I'll just say that Ms. Askey asked about any expenditures of any potential funds? And absolutely no decisions have been made about that. And the ballot language here would be a general tax. And that is just for general governmental purposes. And every year is part of the annual budget, there's conversations about spending the funds and those decisions are made with the annual budget.
So again, this is receiving a report of a poll. I think there's a lot more, all these questions are good questions to keep in mind for the future and to plan on there being more, more analysis. All right, any discussion? We want to keep it simple tonight, we have a couple of other things, but are we done? Thank you very much, Brian, really appreciate it. We'll be back at you.
All right, great, thank you all, have a good evening.
Take care. All right, the next item is the update. I just lost my, here we go. Got one ahead. There we go. Update by the Town Council Safety Element Subcommittee. So I'll turn it over, I don't know who is prepared to speak on that.
So Rebecca and I were on the subcommittee and Rebecca has chosen to go first.
Okay, so I'll try to be quick. So this is a subcommittee report, it's actually not a staff report, that was a software error. So I want, I just want to say that our report is pretty thorough, so hopefully everyone had a chance to read it. I'll start with our recommendations. We recommend that the town council receive this update. We request approval by the full town council for the actions listed in the next, the next steps section, which I'll go over in a little bit. And then we recommend moving forward with the updated Urban Planning Partners contract to complete the second public draft safety element and to get the safety element finished. I want to move on to our actual update. I want to start actually with the very end to let people know that we did include a brief summary of what a safety element is and how it's distinguished from a local hazard mitigation plan and from our safety and resilience initiatives list. And I just want to say in a nutshell that a safety element, and I want to emphasize this, that a safety element is a very high-level document that details the hazards found in Portola Valley and lists the overarching policies that will help mitigate those hazards. And the safety element is not the document where we go into deep detail about how to accomplish all those policies. That detail would go into the local hazard mitigation plan and/or into our safety and resilience list. And now for the update, the bulk of the work that we've been involved in has been reviewing all of the comments that our safety committees and the public provided to, for the original draft safety element that was created by Urban Planning Partners back in 2022. We've spent a lot of time incorporating that excellent, excellent feedback into the draft. And I want to take a quick minute to thank all our safety committees and our residents for lending their expertise to help enhance our town's safety. It was very helpful to understand what areas needed beefing up or modifying. And we appreciate very much your hard work and look forward to continuing to work with you. Moving on, with that extensive review and feedback, we've met with the town staff as well as the fire marshal and have now formulated the next steps for the safety element. In that process, we refined the Urban Planning Partners contract to provide the town with the expertise at the safety element over the finish line. So the next steps that we recommend are, number one, that the subcommittee completes the work of refining the incorporated feedback and comments for consistency and organization. We're aiming to complete this work by the end of this month. We will then hand over the document to the town staff to provide it to the consultant. The consultant will then review and revise the document to ensure that it makes, that it meets state law and state agency requirements, as well as incorporates feedback from the fire marshal and the town geologist. At that point, the consultant will issue the second public draft safety element for public review. And then, once that occurs, the document will go through what's known as the final approval process and that's detailed in our update. And it's essentially, it's going to go through the standard final approval process that all major ordinances go through. And it will include a public review, briefings, a public study session, the review by the state agencies, the Cal Fire and the town, and the state geologists. And then it will go on to the Formal Planning Commission meeting. And finally, it will get to the town council meeting for final approval. And we're working very hard and aiming to complete this whole process, hopefully by the end of the fiscal year. But again, that will be dependent a little bit on the three months that we are required to allow the state departments to review the documents. So if there's any questions, Craig and I are happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. Clearly, a ton of work has been done here. Before we launch into questions, I have a quick procedural question for Catherine. The agendized item was update by the Town Council Safety Element Subcommittee. The recommendation, however, is that the town council approves something. And, and I would have expected this is more of a receive the report and discuss and comment. What are we approving, if anything?
Let's see, this has been agendized as an update, so it's not technically agendized to approve anything. I do see that's part of the recommendation. I guess I would suggest, you know, going forward, that make sure that the agenda titles are synced up because the Brown Act is, is precise about, you know, what the council's supposed to be doing. And so generally speaking, if there is an action required, we do put that in the, in the title. You know, I, I, I think there's a way to, for the council to provide feedback that essentially gives the committee direction going forward without maybe making a formal motion, yeah.
And really, that's all, we're, I mean, we don't need any formal approval. We need, we need to make sure, we wanted to bring back, make sure the whole council could see what we're doing and say, yes, seems like a good direction, keep going, rather than we need a formal approval of X, Y and Z. So, so that might have been poor wording. So that, that's the goal, is to get direction, yeah.
Yeah, that, that all sounds right, okay. In that case, let's open it up for questions. Helen, do you have any questions?
I do.
I noticed that you added your three missing optional hazards section for airport hazards. We don't have an airport in town, is that because we utilize the local airports?
So when I analyzed the 21 elements, Peninsula Resilience Planning Project's safety elements that they created for, I don't know, 10, 10 of the cities or something like that in San Mateo County, a number of them included airport hazards. And I chose to put it into the system, but that is also something that the subcommittee can, will need to sit down and actually go through and decide whether we want to keep it, whether it rises to the level of a hazard or not. We do have a noise ordinance in the, in the general plan. So other things that might occur is, you know, you know, an airplane could fall out of the sky. I don't know, that's a pretty low hazard, but there's other things like that. So, you know, that's one of the things we need to make a decision about based on the content that we've gotten from 21 elements section. So again, if we kind of as a group and working with the consultant decide that it doesn't rise to an adequate hazard, we would take it back out.
Yeah, so the simple version, I'd say, we're going to look at it, hand it off to the consultant. If the consultant says, yeah, this makes sense, we'll leave it in. If they go, no, for you guys, this makes no sense, then they'll take it out. Because that's, that's the idea of, we want to get them sort of the maximal document, if you will, and then, then have them say, okay, really, you don't need that, you don't need that. So we just made sure that because this new process had happened, that those pieces were there and we're going to trust the consultant's judgment when they bring back their second draft.
Okay, thank you. My next question is, what does the community engagement look like in your plan?
So it's going to be a public study session with the town council and the committee chairs, the safety committee chairs.
Great.
And town council.
That's what I said, town council and the committee chairs, yeah.
Okay, and my only other question is, I mean, we talked about what actions we need to take and we, do we need to vote on whether to move forward, forward with Urban Planning Partners?
Well, that's going to be, that's the next agenda item.
Oh, whoops, oh, no wonder.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get to that. We were just recommending as a subcommittee that you guys should approve it, but you'll get to that and you can have that discussion separately.
Losing track of my agenda item, thank you, those are my questions.
I have no questions.
Okay. A couple of, I don't know which, the fiscal impact, I'm a little confused. The budget includes 50,000, I think it might be a typo, but must be expended prior to the end of fiscal year 20, on June 30th, 2025?
No, 26, that's a typo now.
Okay, that makes sense, okay, no problem. And, let's see. So the, no, I don't, I don't have any other questions. I think these are logical and they're relating to the next agenda item. Okay, let's go to public comments. If there's no other questions, looking online, I'm not seeing any hands raised. And there's no one in the schoolhouse raising their hand, so we can bring it back for discussion. I think what we want to do is provide input, did this all look right? You know, things to cover, things to pressure test.
Thank you both for what you've done. I recommend the airport not being included. But anyway, thank you for what you've done, I think it looks great, thank you.
I didn't understand, what did you say? Oh, the airport section, okay.
Mary?
Oh, I, thank you for pushing this through and getting it going. I think that's the important part, it's one of the things that we've been wanting to do as a, as a council and as a town. And really appreciate getting it to this point. I, I have had the, the question asked about the use of consultants, but I'm saving the rest of that question for later.
Yep, okay. No, I think this all looks like it's coming together. There's a lot of threads that need to be woven together and, and it's a lot of work. So I do want to recognize all that and extend appreciation. In general, it looks right to me. And I, the one thing I would say is, I, I would like maybe every other month for updates because if we are trying to get this done by the end of the fiscal year, it doesn't have to be anything huge, but just, you know, status reports and next steps would be good to keep on our horizon.
And, and I would assume, I mean, I think once we hand it off to the consultant, I think the subcommittee's done.
Okay.
And then it's, we, because we, we were trying to basically make sure that this kept moving and kind of help staff. But once we hand it to consultants, they're going to come back with a second draft. At that point, hopefully we have a planning director in-house and this is really the planning director's purview that we've, you know, again, we're trying to help out given, given the resources that we have on staff right now. But, but so that's, that's my sense is I think we're, we're hopefully going to be done maybe by the end of this month.
Okay, and then I guess my, my request of you converts over to a request for the town manager to just figure out a regular cadence of some update when, when it makes sense. I don't have a prescription for it, but if we are targeting under the fiscal year, I think we ought to monitor where this is relative to other efforts in town. It could be a five-minute report, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, can I just make one clarification though? In the report for this item and the following scope for the safety element contract, the community engagement would consist of a study session with the town council and the planning commission, not the safety element chairs. And that was deliberate because the planning commission is the advisory review body and would make a recommendation. And so since they would review this before it comes to you for final approval at a public hearing, we wanted to include them so that that would avoid them having potential comments that would then necessitate changes.
that would then necessitate changes much later in the process, when then it would just add cost and time.
So what, what of the next steps or approval process would change?
Well, it, the text is right, but what Craig said is about including the safety committee chairs is incorrect. It's the planning commission.
Okay.
The chairs could certainly be included if you wanted to include them. That would be just three more people, but give us direction.
Yeah, well, what he had talked about, and I think we're, is that we invite the chairs. I mean, I don't, I think the planning commission is required. I mean, it's, so it's a study session between two, those two bodies, but we were going to invite the safety committee chairs.
Of course, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. All right, I think we can wrap up this item and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is consider authorizing the mayor to execute a professional consulting services agreement for the Portola Valley Safety Element Update with Urban Planning Partners. Looks like Steve is geared up for a presentation.
I am, thank you, Mayor Haskell, members of the council. The item is a follow-up to the safety element subcommittee item you just heard. And this is a request to authorize the mayor to execute a 12-month consultant services agreement in the not exceed $49,994 for the town's safety element update with Urban Planning Partners. We're giving you just, you were just received an update from the town's subcommittee. I'll briefly review the background and what we're trying to accomplish here through the contract. As you know, the safety element update was paused in July 2023 to focus on the town's general plan housing element. At the time, the town was under contract with Urban Planning Partners. We utilized Atlas Planning as a subconsultant for the expertise in the safety element work. A first public draft safety was circulated in October 2022. The town received comments from the public and key town committees, including the geologic safety committee, the wildlife preparedness committee slash community planning assistance for wildfire, known as CPAW, CPAW, and sustainability committee, let's see, and emergency preparedness committee. The evening, let's see, this evening, you heard from the subcommittee that they're currently working on reviewing the list of compiled comments from the relevant committees and incorporating revisions into the administrative second public draft safety element. With contract approval, we anticipate the administrative draft will go to the Urban Planning Partners by the end of December 2025. I think you were just referring to that. From there, Urban Planning Partners will do a series of things here. Will revise the draft based on state law, state agency requirements, ensure consistency with the town's general plan and housing element updates. The updated draft will be forwarded to the fire marshal and the town geologist for the comments to be included in the draft. We will then issue the second public draft safety element for public review 30 days prior to holding a joint town council planning commission study session that you were just referring to. The study session will be conducted, let's see, with town feedback incorporated. optionally, we may prepare a third public draft safety element under a separate authorization, then prepare the final draft safety element and submit it to the mandated state agencies for review. If the state agencies request revisions, we identified an optional task to prepare a second final draft safety element. And the permit planning and building director at that time will review the final document and initiate the final approval process. The schedule for completion will be developed as we fill vacancies in the planning and building department, particularly that, the director, including the, including the director. So for now, staff proposes to move forward with the preparation of the second public safety draft element. As that happens, we anticipate about a six to nine months, which will include potential 90-day review period by CAL FIRE. So in closing, I also wanted to note that for the record, there's a minor error on page 177 of your packet. That's in the contract itself where it identifies $50,000 in text and $49,994 in a numerical figure. And as I mentioned, we acknowledge that the correct not exceed amount is $49,994.
Great, thank you.
Can I add just a couple of quick comments to that?
Sure.
One, just for the other council members that aren't deeply steeped in this, this is a time and materials contract. So it was hard to scope this, and so this is sort of a rough estimate of what's involved. So that's part of what Rebecca and I were working on is to try to help, you know, get some stuff done so they can spend less time getting maps, et cetera, like that. Like Rebecca was great about getting CAL FIRE maps. So we're hoping that when they go through this, when they actually have the thing in their hand, they're going to go, oh, well, all right, yeah, we get what we have now and move through this at a good pace. And then the other piece that Steve said is at that point, we're going to have a planning and building director in place. And we assumed that they were going to review both the safety element and this contract to say, okay, what do we need to finish this off? And this may be the right stuff, or by the time we've gotten that far, they may go, oh, well, we need to tweak it a little bit. So that was why we were comfortable with getting started on this, because the next draft and getting feedback from the fire marshal and the geologist, I mean, those are obvious things to do, whether we have a planning and building director or not. And then once we have the director here, then we can sort of re-scope it if need be. And I'm not sure we will, but that's, that's sort of the broader context. So again, time and materials, I think, is the, one of the important pieces here.
Yep, that's very helpful.
And the other thing I'd say is Urban Planning Partners is working on our housing element, so they're pretty familiar with a lot of stuff that we do. And that's the other advantage of them.
Yep, makes sense. All right, bringing it back to council for questions. Mary, do you have any questions?
Just the one that I, I think the public would like to know a little bit more from Darcy about how we could make urban, urban planning as efficient as possible.
Yes, efficiency is my middle name. So Steve and I and the subcommittee, thank you very much, spent a lot of time reviewing the scope and you might recall it came to you in, in July. So we spent a lot of time revising that scope dramatically, both to economize. So for example, that scope had like $10,000 in a community meeting. I think, you know, my preference is to engage you as the policy body and also engage the planning commission, who I noted will be reviewing this as well. And so that was a redirect and we tried to reduce their time to, so that's a staff and a consultant partnership, but staff will be leading most of the effort. But what got more complicated is we dove deeper into it was just looking at the state agency reviews. And honestly, you'll see some optional tasks around, we just don't know. This is also true to the housing element amendment. We just don't know. It, it should be simple is what I've told, but I, I don't ever want to presume something as simple when dealing with the state. So I believe the scope is realistic, but my approach was to include some optional tasks. So if those are removed, we could, we, it would be under 40,000. And then if the state review and your review at the study session is very, you know, is very narrow and crisp and you give us precise direction, then that will save money too. So I can't emphasize that when we pay time and materials, it, it is important for us just always to ask ourselves, you know, where are we in the process and what can we do to stay on time and on budget? So I'm optimistic that this is a very realistic scope and that we can get this to, back to you for a study session in January, February, and then to the state, and then back here for adoption, ideally by the end of the fiscal year, so June. That's a little bit aggressive, but that's what I would like to propose we accomplish. And we will, of course, be monitoring the consultants. We get monthly budget, monthly invoices, and especially with Steve and I here, we review those every month and then we check back in with the, the table you have, which is the budget. We get a report on that every single month, or we don't pay the bill.
Great. Thanks. Any other questions, Mary?
I, I guess the question is, the reason they were selected was because they'd had the prior experiences.
So that, I will also say, so I, I believe that is economical and efficient, both. I did, I want to emphasize that I did talk to the 21 elements group, which is doing the peninsula resistance project. They were too far along for us to piggyback on them, but I want to emphasize that some of the cities that are doing this and doing a robust safety element like us, they're into the six figures. A larger city is 350,000 just for the consultants, but a full-time staff members. I would emphasize that some of these elements are approaching middle to high six figures. So we just need to be very focused in our work here. But I will tell you that we, Steve and I have been working with Urban Planning Partners on the housing element amendment, which will be coming for you for an update on December 10th. We will be having a robust update that night to know them to continue in on their schedule. But in working with them, we've had a positive experience and we have been engaging closely with them and part, really collaborating with them to ensure that our work is coordinated and appropriate.
Great.
Thank you.
Helen, do you have questions?
I don't, thank you.
Rebecca and Craig, anything?
No.
I know you guys are all over this. Now, my, my question was partially answered, but just to put a fine point on it, to date, Urban Planning Partners has not been involved in the safety element. Is that correct?
Well, not for many years, not since 2023, correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
But the, but the original work was done by them.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So there, there's some level of familiarity with, and certainly of familiarity with the town, given the housing element, right? Okay.
I guess one comment was, as they're working on the housing element, part of the job with the safety element is ensuring that it, it is compliant with our general plan. So the fact that they're working on our housing element, they're familiar, it helps.
Consistency.
Consistency, exactly.
Be an additional level. Will we have consistency on who at Urban Planning Partners will work?
Yes, it's the exact same team.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would emphasize, I believe that will also save us money, the efficiency. Another thing I'll note that's important is that the SEQA document, which could get expensive, both for the housing element and potentially for this, although typically the safety element is sort of self-mitigating because you're addressing safety, but they were combined together for the housing element and safety element. And so we just want to, that's another reason, because the SEQA consultant remembers a subconsultant to the lead consultant, so we just also want to make sure that we're synced up there.
All right, so any other questions?
Actually, I do have a question, quick question on the SEQA. My understanding is sometimes you can do a SEQA exemption?
That's correct. We are looking at that, but I just want to be, I want to be aware of what like the original plan was. So we're, we're looking into that.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right, we're going to go to public questions, comments. I'm looking online, I'm seeing no hands raised. So bringing it back for, for discussion among the council, I think we need to determine whether we're willing to approve, or I'm looking for the exact language here. Authorize a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the contract. So that's the topic. Craig, do you want to start?
How did we just make that motion?
Yeah.
So moved.
Anyone have any discussion points before we launch in? Okay?
I so moved, I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Steve, for staying. All right, so now we're down to the liaison reports. Before I go to public comment, I will just add one and I'll welcome any other verbal reports that people have. We did have a coffee with the mayor and had, I didn't count, but 10 to 15 people attend. Topics covered were varied as usual. Questions regarding meetings by the PC and ASCC, why aren't they eating, meeting more? And reports are made of upcoming meetings where their input was anticipated, including with the Dorothy Ford Park and Open Space bathrooms, a very popular topic. There was a question on why we're posting formal notices and papers other than the daily post or the post and almanac. We're, we're confirming this, these notices for formal notices of meetings and regulations are very expensive. And the almanac publishes on a fairly irregular, like they can skip a publication and it's not as reliable as we would like. That being said, it's what most people look to. So I think, Darcy, you're going to look into this and figure out what, what makes sense. But we did recognize that the almanac is something that most people look to as a practical Planning department vacancies, they, they asked for updates and Darcy was engaging on that. Status of the housing element and interaction with HCD, as Darcy mentioned, will be giving some, some study session. I'm not sure what it's going to be in December on that. A request for easy access to the website pages that relate to this. So we'll give some thought to that going forward if, if we can have easier guideposts. Questions on whether the town could benefit from using AI given our staffing limitations? Good question. Questions on enforcement, how does it work? There's a lot of speeding cars in different parts of town. We went over what people can do and outreach, but basically go to the sheriff or if it's something that's amenable to a polite call from, you know, staff to, to ask about why something is in a certain place, if it's a trail infraction, for example. You know, we get, went over how to think about those outreach efforts, but, and then people were asking about the utility downtimes, like how to get, but that was really outside of the town's purview. We did try and give people resources to reference. So a lot, a lot of good, varied topics, good engagement for a morning. And there was a request for later in the day as well as an option going forward. So any other verbal reports before we go to public comments?
I just want to do a quick correction on my own liaison report for PCE, Peninsula Clean Energy, that they're changing their name to West, West Light Energy and the, West Light, yeah. And the typo is they are anticipating moving into a new office in San Mateo and they're projecting October 1st, 2026.
Okay, got it. Great.
I want to, yeah, I had a verbal on the geologic safety committee. I think I gave a verbal last time. It comes pretty quick before our meeting. The, but this, the, it met the day before yesterday and I missed it, but I had to do a download from the chairman and they're excited about the geologic and ground moving potential maps. They're starting to work with John Wallace to, and they're looking to see whether they're going to have a budget to, to reconcile the differences. They also are working between reconcile the maps to his current state of data. So we want to get that done. We also, they also have a new member named Simon Klemper, who is a full professor of geophysics at Stanford. And he's hoping to get, he, he's teaching the introduction to geophysics. And they're hoping to get a non-invasive seismic vines across the Barracole and Black Mountain faults covered by, by Stanford, by the, done by the, his class, which I think will be a very good experience for everybody, including the geologic safety committee. And actually, the two places they're wanting to investigate are both on MRSD. And so I wanted to get, I was planning, shall I say, to contact MRSD for Hawthorne's and Windy Hill access for that project.
All right, well, work with, with staff as well because
Great.
complicated in terms of
Yeah.
Great.
I think that's it.
All right. Yeah, we have Dave Cardinal online. Dave, go ahead.
Sure, thanks. Super quick. Simon's great. I'm not a geologist, but every interaction, interaction I've had with him, he knows what he's doing. So he's a really good addition to the team and that's all I wanted to say.
Great, thank you. Great to hear, thank you. All right, bring it back, I think we can have a, a motion to adjourn. I will note that after I will note that after this, we're going into another closed session as we didn't finish the closed session business prior to our public session, our regular meeting. So motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I, okay, we are adjourned from the regular meeting. Thank you.